Good evening. Due to COVID-19, this meeting will be conducted as a Zoom webinar pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N 2920, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act. This meeting is being webcast on Comcast TV Channel 15 and livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel at https://www.youtube.com/user/cityofhayward and on the city website at https://hayward.legistar.com/calender-aspx. The mayor will call upon members of the city council, city staff, and other speakers by name and ask that they state their names before giving comments or remarks. Individuals participating via Zoom with their cameras enabled are reminded that their activities are visible to viewers. City council members and members of the public participating by Zoom wishing to speak should use the "Raise Hand" feature, and the mayor will call upon them at the appropriate time. Members participating via teleconference wishing to speak should dial *9, and they will be called upon by the last four digits of their phone number. It is requested that public speakers state their names and organizations, but providing such information is voluntary. Written public comments received by email at list-mayor-council@hayward-ca.gov, cityclerk@hayward-ca.gov, or via ecomment by 3:00 PM will be distributed to the city council and staff, published on the city's meeting and agenda center under Documents Received After Published Agenda and entered into the record. Documents received after 3:00 PM through the adjournment of the meeting will be included as part of the meeting record and published the following day. A roll call vote will be taken for all action items. In order to get the full Zoom experience, please make sure your application is up to date. Public members wishing to speak with the city council can send an email to list-mayor-council@hayward-ca.gov or cityclerk@hayward-ca.gov.
And with that, I want to call this meeting of the Hayward City Council to order and welcome everyone, and we will ask our Mayor Pro Tem, Ayesha Wahab, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
Thank you. All rise. We have a flag right behind our city clerk. I'm not sure if you guys can see it at home, but yeah, it's right there. So if you guys will join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, Sir Manuel was holding a flag as well, so we did have flags in the picture there. All right, thank you. And Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Andrews.
Present.
Councilmember Lemnun.
Good evening.
Councilmember Marquez.
Present.
Councilmember Salinas.
Here.
Councilmember Wahab.
Here.
Councilmember Sermanio.
Here, ready to go.
Right, thank you. Mayor Halliday.
I'm here as well. Thank you. That brings us to our closed session announcement this evening. The city council did meet in closed session at 6 o'clock this evening. As part of our only agenda item was our annual review of the city clerk, which we have now completed, and this is part of what we do every year in doing, you know, reviewing and discussing the past year's events with each of the three people who report directly to the city council. So we have completed the city clerks, we'll be doing the city managers and the city attorneys in upcoming weeks. So we took no reportable action this evening in doing that. And with that, that brings us to our very special presentation this evening. This is the City of Hayward's 38th Annual Earth Day Poster and Writing Contest. Now, this is generally one of my favorite events of the year because we usually have the council chambers full of the winning students who have submitted winning entries in our poster and writing contest. It's our celebration, one of our major events to celebrate Earth Day, which I think in Hayward we celebrate every day of the year really, but especially on April 22nd last week was the actual Earth Day, and this contest coincides with that. And what I really love about this event is with the council chambers full of the winning students and who get to walk up to the front of the room in front of their families and teachers and friends who are there, and they get their award, and I get to shake each of their hands. Well, as we know, both shaking hands and having large gatherings in the council chamber are not advised events this year. We were not able to do it the way we usually do, like with many things these days. So maybe we can't all be together in the council chambers, but I nevertheless want to just warmly welcome all of the winners and their families who are watching tonight from the safety of their homes. Hopefully, I know we do have quite a few attendees, so I'm suspecting that a lot of you are out there watching this, and we want to make this as special an evening as we can for you under the circumstances. So we're going to go ahead, and now I believe that we have a PowerPoint presentation that we're...
I'll be sharing the screen. Hold on, give me one second.
Okay. Yes.
You see it?
Yes, I can, and you can now advance it. One, and then, yes, let's stop there. Oh, well, that's, okay, well, that's something I'm going to talk about later. That's our Earth Month Challenge, but I don't think these slides are quite in sync, so we'll just go ahead. This year's, oh, here we have some of the entries. Okay, so this year's posters, essays, and poems submitted to the city show students' creativity and enthusiasm about Earth Day, and these are just really great to look at. You know, let's just keep them up there for a minute. Now, so as I said, this is our 38th year of doing this, and it is a significant part of our city's Earth Day campaign, and clearly you are also learning a lot about how to take care of the earth in your classrooms there, and I think the essays and the posters that we've received really demonstrate that. So as I had said before, sustainability and being green are big priorities here in Hayward. Okay, we can move to the next one, I think. So I do want to thank the judges from the Hayward Arts Council who evaluated and selected our winners. We had Mina Mangwala Al Murdock and Raylin Syrop from the Hayward Arts Council, and we really thank them. I'm sure it wasn't an easy task. I will say that this year we had 218 entries from 31 schools, and I do want to thank all of the students for their participation and Hayward's teachers for encouraging their students to use their imaginations and engage their students about the importance of the environment and conservation, and all of that helps to make our community greener and more sustainable. Madam City Clerk, could you go back to that, the previous slide? I do see that, yes. The, no, the one next, the next one. Yes, this, okay. So I'm going to talk a little bit about this. This is, we couldn't hold our annual cleanup and Earth Day Fair at Weeks Park this year, but that, you know, that we usually have, and I think hopefully soon we will be getting back to all of those normal activities. But we do invite all of you to take part in our first-ever Earth Month Challenge. Now, you only have the rest of this week because the contest ends on April 30th, but you can earn prizes, and so check out the website. I think you can see, you can see it there in the corner. Go to our website, and I found it by just searching for Earth Day, and it took me right to where I could click into all of the activities that you can do and check off and let us know about, and we will reward you with prizes. So do check that out. Okay, we can move on. Let's see, two, there are the pictures, there are the judges. And so I think with that, now I'm going to turn this over to our city clerk, Miriam Lenz, and she is going to summarize what I've just said and some of what's coming up in Spanish for any of our Spanish speakers who weren't able to get fully from my discussion what was said. So Ms. Lenz, would you like to go ahead and let our Spanish speakers know what's happening here?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. Buenas noches y bienvenidos a los que nos están acompañando esta noche. Haré un resumen de las palabras dirigidas por nuestra alcaldesa, Halliday, y también les haré conocer un poquito de lo que va a suceder en la presentación de esta noche. Esta noche tendremos la presentación anual de premios del concurso de escritura y afiche del Día de la Tierra. A nombre de la alcaldesa de Hayward, les damos una cordial bienvenida a los ganadores y las familias que nos están acompañando esta noche. Los afiches, composiciones, y poemas recibidos muestran la creatividad de los estudiantes por el Día de la Tierra, el cual se celebró el 22 de abril. El concurso es una parte importante de la campaña del Día de la Tierra en Hayward, y este año marca 38 años de la celebración del Día de la Tierra. La sostenibilidad y la ecología es una prioridad aquí en Hayward. Como no se pudo organizar el día de la limpieza anual o la feria del Día de la Tierra en Weeks Park, los invitamos a participar en nuestro primer desafío del mes de la tierra, donde los residentes podrán completar actividades ecológicas desde su casa y ganar hasta el 30 de abril. Este año hubieron 218 sumisiones de 31 escuelas de Hayward. Se agradece a todos los estudiantes por la participación y a los maestros por alentar a sus estudiantes a usar la imaginación y involucrar a sus estudiantes sobre la importancia del medio ambiente. Se agradece también a los jueces de Hayward Arts Council, los cuales evaluaron y seleccionaron a los ganadores. La consejera Elisa Marquez dirigirá algunas palabras sobre el concurso, el cual incluyó temas sobre la conservación del agua, el tirar la basura, justicia ambiental, reciclaje, compostaje, y otros temas ambientales. El concurso brinda a los estudiantes y maestros la oportunidad de describir con palabras y transmitir a través de imágenes su compromiso por un medio ambiente más sostenible. Cada uno de los ganadores recibirá una tarjeta de regalo que se puede usar en una variedad de tiendas en Hayward. Los ganadores del segundo lugar recibirán una tarjeta de regalo de $150, y los ganadores del primer lugar recibirán una tarjeta de regalo de $200. La tarjeta de regalo y el certificado se enviarán por correo a cada estudiante. Los concejales Elisa Marquez y Francisco Sermanio anunciarán los ganadores en las diferentes categorías, y después la alcaldesa dará un reconocimiento a algunos de los mejores maestros de Hayward. Cada maestro que tenga un alumno ganador, de primer lugar, recibirá una tarjeta de regalo de $100. Cada maestro de segundo ganador recibirá una tarjeta de regalo de $75. Aquellos que estén interesados en ver y leer las obras de arte ganadoras estarán en la página cibernética de la ciudad. Y un anuncio más que quiero hacer es que los estudiantes que buscan involucrarse más están invitados a postularse a la Comisión Juvenil de Hayward, que también se conoce como Hayward Youth Commission. Los requisitos son que estén entre las edades de 30 a 20 años y que vivan en Hayward o dentro de los límites del distrito escolar de Hayward. Las solicitudes se vencen el 21 de mayo. Para más información tendrán la oportunidad de ver la pantalla con el número. Una vez más, muchas gracias, felicidades a las familias y a los estudiantes por acompañarnos. Muchas gracias. With that, Mayor Halliday, thank you very much. I now hand...
Thank you for doing that, and those of you who speak Spanish now know actually more than the rest of us because some of that is still to come in our English version. But for now, I am now going to turn the presentation over to my two colleagues on our council Sustainability Committee. The three of us make up that committee, and although I know every member of this council is fully behind the things that we do and promotes sustainability in many ways in their lives, but so, but councilmember Elisa Marquez and councilmember Francisco Sermanio and I serve on the Sustainability Committee, and so they are going to help me this evening with this presentation, and I will now turn this over to councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. As the mayor mentioned, this is our 38th Annual Earth Day Campaign. Each year, Hayward's residents demonstrate their strong commitment to maintain a clean and attractive community. This year's annual Earth Day poster and writing contest includes entries on water conservation, littering, environmental justice, recycling, composting, and related environmental topics. The contest is an important part of our celebration of Earth Day and our Cleanup Days campaign because it gives students and teachers an opportunity to describe through words and convey through images their commitment to a more sustainable environment. Each of our winners will receive a gift card that could be used at a variety of stores in Hayward. Second-place winners will receive a $150 gift card, and first-place winners will receive a $200 gift card. The gift card and framed certificate will be mailed to each student. And now it is my pleasure to announce the winners of this year's Earth Day poster and writing contest with councilmember Francisco Sermanio.
Thank you very much to all who participated, and we're going to present words to the youngest of the young, ending with the high school students. So let's see, we're going through kindergarten through the first-grade writing category. The second-place winner is Clara Ollie Edwards from Burbank Elementary School, and there she is. You can read it later on. Hold your applause, please. We'll do the applause after the whole event. And then, the next slide is going to show the first-place winner, which is Annabele On Hernández, a very good student who I know personally, by the way, from Schaefer Elementary School, and that is hers kindergarten marvelous material. All right, and now we go to the kindergarten through the first-grade poster category, and our second-place winner is Matthew Partida from Treeview Elementary School, and he will get another tooth coming pretty soon. And then the first-place winner is Elisa Lee from Stonebury Elementary School. Fantastic. If you're a parent and you're with them, please give them a hug and a kiss for us and applaud them and pat them in the back. Those are our first-grade and kindergarten winners. Now I turn it over to my colleague Elisa Marquez for the next set of winners.
Thank you, councilmember Sermanio. For the second through third-grade writing category, the second-place winner is Francesca Ramos Ramirez from Fairview Elementary School. On Slide 7, you'll see the first-place winner, Tiberius Reed from Marina Primary School. For the second through third-grade poster category, the second-place winner is Amalia Leon Hernández from Schaefer Park Elementary School. And the first-place winner is Juliana Muñoz from Golden Oak Montessori School. So please give your students, your children, a huge hug and our deep appreciation for their participation, and we also thank their teachers. And now I'll give it back to councilmembers Sermanio.
Very good. Now we go to the fourth grade and the fifth grade in the writing category, and the second-place winner is Matias Michelena from Schaefer Park School. Very good, and I write in the, oh, I write my back too, how about that? And the first-place winner is Adeline Kim from Connecticut Waters Charter School East Bay, no, Connecting Waters, not Connecticut, I'm sorry. Very good. Oh, that's a long one. Excellent, very good, Adeline. And then the next slide is going to show the second-place winner, first, Valeria Calvario Cornejo from Longwood Elementary School. Beautiful job. And the first-place winner is Adeline Kim from Connecting Waters Charter School East Bay. Congratulations, thank you to the teachers, thank you to the parents for supporting them. My, and I hand it over to my colleague Elisa Marquez.
Thank you. For the sixth through eighth-grade writing category, the second-place winner is Sharia Ruthar from Martin Luther King Junior Middle School. And our first-place winner is Isla Khalil Evangelista from East Avenue Elementary School. For the sixth through eighth-grade poster category, the second-place winner is Madrette Vázquez from Anthony Ochoa Middle School. And the first-place winner is Solchi Francisco from Martin Luther King Junior Middle School here in Hayward. And if you look at the screen, you could see the detail in their artwork. We've got some really young, talented, young students. Back to you, councilmember Sermanio.
And Solchi is now related to me, by the way. We're now in, for the high school writing category, ninth grade, I believe we have second place winner is Tanya Contreras from Tennyson High School. Yeah, Tennyson, Lancers, all right. And the first-place winner is Simaima Janis Tulua Poau from Tennyson High School. All right, very good job. Running barefoot in rich soil, excellent. And on the poster category, the second-place winner is Reese Maideya from California Crosspoint Academy. Very nice. And the first-place winner is Nancy Hep from California Crosspoint Academy. We're running out of time, Hayward. Very good, congratulations, most excellent. Again, thank the teachers and thank the parents. I believe now we go over, oh, congratulations to all the students, and I believe we're going to our mayor now, who's going to tell something, say something about the teachers, Mayor? Is that you?
Okay, yes. So I want to acknowledge, and there are obviously some very fine teachers out there, and the artwork was amazing, and I can't wait to really get into and read all of those essays just from what I saw. You guys did a great job, and I don't, I'm sure that those works would not have been as good as they were without these great teachers. So we really appreciate all of you for encouraging your students to participate in this event and helping them along the way. And so each teacher with a first-place poster or writing winner will receive a $100 gift card, and each teacher with a second-place winner will receive a $75 gift card, and these cards can be used at a variety of stores in Hayward. And as councilmember Sermanio always tells us, please shop Hayward first. So we will first recognize the teachers of the writing category winners, and so the writing teachers, we have Mrs. Nelson from Schaefer Park Elementary School, Mrs. Maria Mendez from Burbank Elementary School, Diana Marina from Marina Primary School, Mrs. Thompson from Fairview Elementary School, Jacqueline Jornay from Connecting Waters Charter Schools East Bay, John Martoni from Schaefer Park Elementary, Ms. Giovanni Coleman from East Avenue Elementary, Barrett Wells from Martin Luther King Junior Middle School, and Charles Stevens from Tennyson High School. So congratulations to all of you teachers. Now, those were the, I suppose, write English or writing teachers, whatever they call that subject in school these days. Now we're going to recognize the teachers from the poster winners, and these may be probably classroom elementary school teachers, or perhaps in some cases art teachers, but they are Ms. Lynn from Stonebury Elementary, Ms. Marcelina Schelling from Treeview Elementary, Supreet Kuyar from Golden Oak Montessori School, Mr. Francisco Soto from Schaefer Park Elementary School, Jacqueline Jornay, I think she won in the previous one category too, from Connecting Waters Charter School East Bay, Alma Lopez Lalonde from Longwood Elementary School, Mr. Yun from Martin Luther King Junior Middle School, Kim Keane from Anthony Ochoa Middle School, and Carrie Fong from California Crosspoint Academy. So congratulations to all of you teachers for guiding your students. I really do wish we could all be in the council chambers celebrating with all of you. I would like to shake all of your hands, but for now I'm just going to offer my hand into this Zoom machine here as a virtual handshake to all of you, and again, congratulations. So this now concludes the awards presentation for the 2021 City of Hayward Earth Day Poster and Writing Contest. And for those of you who are interested in viewing these and seeing this artwork a little bit more closely and reading the winning pieces of the winning essays, they are up on the city's webpage, and they can also be found at that, at that address that you can see there, tinyurl.com/pwwinners. So I hope that you can all find that, I'm pretty sure I can, and check it out because those essays and that artwork really looks like it deserves a closer look. So congratulations to all the students, and thank you to all the families and friends because we know that you're important too. And this is not the same, but we do thank you for practicing social distancing and participating virtually this evening. We want to once again thank all of the teachers who encourage their students to participate, and I know they're all very proud of their winning students. You're really, you teachers are irreplaceable assets to your schools and this community, and we really do thank you for all of your hard work. Now, I just have one more public service announcement here. You are the students who are going to guide us in the future, who are going to be sitting in these city council seats, you know, being members of the Sustainability Committee, and if you are looking to get more involved even right now in the City of Hayward, those of you who are of high school age, actually, is that correct? What, it's ninth, ninth grade?
Middle school also, 13 years old.
Oh, 13, sorry, I forgot that. Yes, so, yes, so if you're in middle school or high school, we would like to invite you to join the Hayward Youth Commission. This commission advises the city council hard, you know, the Recreation District and the School District about issues that affect young people in the Hayward community and the applications. So you do have to apply, and there is a selection process, and these applications are due May 21st, and you can also find out more information about this program again at our website, and do we have a, it's all read, it's ty-n-y-u-r-l.com/hyc, that's for Hayward Youth Council, 2021. And if you can't find it, contact our city clerk, and she will, and she will... And if you can't find it, contact our city clerk and she will, and she will make sure that you can get to that. So if you are interested in joining the youth commission, please look into that. We would love to have you as part of our city team. And so with that, we now have to say goodbye to you. You are all welcome to stay and hear us talk about some of the things we have on our agenda tonight.
Mayor, I think Councilmember Andrews had a comment about the contest, and then if we could please, before we move to public comments, everybody unmute and give all the winners and teachers a round of applause, please.
That's an excellent suggestion. So, sorry, I didn't see that. Councilmember Andrews, please go ahead.
Oh, it was when you were asking about when we were going to resume cleanup. Right now, we're on the books for resuming cleanup July 24th, so.
Oh, wonderful.
Out there downtown Hayward, so we'll keep you posted. It might be around the plaza, so.
Okay, great. Thank you for letting us know. And, and then, yes, I think that was an excellent suggestion. So all of you, let's unmute everybody and give all of these people a big round of applause.
Congratulations.
Not quite like the audi, whole audience in the council chambers, but we gave it a good try. So thank you all for joining us this evening. We were really glad to have you. And as I said, you're welcome to stay and listen to us. We have some really nice things to discuss tonight about money that we're granting to a lot of great organizations in our city through our community agency funding. And then also, we're going to talk about some of the stimulus money that we're getting from the federal government and how we're going to use that. So with that, we will, but before that, let's see, we, yes, okay. We are going to move into public comments, and our first public, public comment this evening is going to be from Councilmember Mark Salinas, who has a special presentation and proclamation to read to us this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I was reached out by a constituent a few days ago, asking us to acknowledge Arab Heritage Month as it is in April. And so I wanted to thank the mayor for generating the proclamation. And I did have a few sentences to read to, to acknowledge this month. And here it goes. For over a century, Arab Americans have contributed to every facet of American society, from social justice to politics to business to education. They hail from all 22 Arab countries in the Middle East and Africa, and over 3.5 million now call the U.S. their home, including our Arab siblings right here in the city of Hayward. This proclamation is a symbol of inclusion, equity, compassion, but more so, it is a formal means to educate our residents about the Arab culture and celebrate their contributions to our city in April. By learning about our neighbors, we can all work together to build a more equitable society where we all thrive regardless of ethnicity or race. To our diverse group of Arab siblings who are Muslim, Christian, or Jewish, white, brown or black, born abroad or born right here, we join you in celebrating your heritage on this historic month of April. And so there is a proclamation, and I just want to read the last whereas, whereas Hayward, California is the third most diverse city in the United States with a commitment to being an inclusive, equitable, and compassionate community, and now therefore, I, Barbara Halliday, Mayor of City of Hayward, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Arab Heritage, Arab American Heritage Month. So I wanted to thank Omar Hashwi for bringing this to me, and I wanted to thank the mayor for producing this proclamation. And with that, I'll make sure we get, I don't think you can see it, but we'll make sure we get this in the hands of the appropriate people. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and again, I join you in honoring our Arab American residents. So now we're going to move into regular public, public comments. And I, I want to call, before we go into that, I want to make sure everyone knows who is attending and who might have been interested in what was item number three on our agenda regarding an Amazon facility out on, in our industrial area on West Winton Avenue. That item is being continued to May 4th. So if you had been attending this evening to talk about that item, we will be taking that, we won't be taking it up this evening, we'll be taking it up on May 4th. And with that, we'll go to our public comments, and I do believe we have some here this evening. So Madam City Clerk, are you ready to go ahead with that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, as we normally do. I'll go ahead and make the announcement for public comment, and we have the, our point there, perfect. So community members wishing to join the meeting via Zoom can follow the information on the first page of the agenda, which is also displayed on the screen right now. The information is also available on the screen for those viewing the meeting via the city's YouTube channel, Channel 15, and the city's website. If you are using Zoom to join the meeting, click on the raise hand button to request to speak. When joining via phone, press start nine to raise your hand. I will unmute your microphone when it's your turn to provide public comment. And with that, Mayor, we could go ahead and start. I believe the first person I see is Claire Dugan.
Yes.
Going to go ahead and allow to speak? Please go ahead.
Oops. Okay, am I going now?
Yes, please go.
So good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to speak on support of getting drones into the Hayward Police Department. I know that's not on your agenda now, but it will be coming up. And my focus is always, as you've heard my other comments, it's really on the public safety of the average Hayward citizen. And I'm just wondering why HPD doesn't get drones? Because I know the cost is minimal. I think it was like $30,000 for four drones. It's almost like getting four employees for very cheap with no training and no pensions to deal with. So it's not the cost of the program clearly, because this issue's been around for a couple of years. And I think it's beyond a doubt that all the surrounding police departments not only have them, but use them to good effect. And again, I'm concerned because I think it's helpful for citizen safety. If drones can go in, it not only keeps the police and the possible criminal activities safer, but it keeps the normal citizen who may be caught up in some of these activities safer. So I, I just don't understand, and maybe you could speak to, why it is you haven't allowed the police department to have what looks like a tool that's going to be good for everybody? I, I don't, I don't understand that. And I know that they have privacy, some groups are concerned about privacy, but there's clear policies and guidelines for the use of this. So if there's any sort of reasonable reason why you guys are kind of stalling on getting them, please help me understand. Thanks.
Thank you. And I'll just ask our city manager, that item had to be continued, but will be coming back to us at some point, I believe.
Correct. I think we're planning to bring it back probably in the June or July timeframe.
Okay, thank you. So stay tuned. Next speaker is Alicia Crater.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name's Alicia Crater. I'm a member of the Hayward Community Coalition, also known as Haycoco. I'm calling in today to reiterate Haycoco's budget recommendations. We understand that budget season is coming up once again for the council. Haycoco has made several recommendations on the city budget over the last year, specifically regarding policing and social services, to which we've seen no substantial changes. Yesterday, we heard proposals from the advisory committee regarding policing and social services that were highly critiqued and flawed in their process. While we appreciate the work of the committee members, it was disappointing to see an entire year go by and so little intentionality from the city council in their efforts to make equitable change. This past Saturday, Haycoco held an event outside of the city hall to allow our community the space to share and heal in light of recent police murders across the nation. These police murders hit close to home for many Hayward and East Bay families who have lost family members to the police here in our city. We heard from mothers who lost their sons, uncles who lost their nephews, and a mourning community pleading for change. The pain these families carry is one I cannot imagine, but continue to empathize with and hope you all will too, as you recognize that you hold the power to make a difference for them and for those who will be next if you do not act. As an organization founded out of the local movement to address Hayward Police Violence in Hayward, or sorry, Police Violence in Hayward, Haycoco would like to reiterate our budget demands to help making the right decision easier for you all, the council. We ask again that you fundamental health crisis response team move Hayward's 911 call center away from the police department, double the funds addressing homelessness and housing affordability, and create a Hayward Social Services Department. Please be a doer, not a talker, so that we too can celebrate an ounce of accountability when we see one. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephen Shaw.
Could you please unmute? Sorry. Hi, my name is Stephen Shaw. I'm the president of the Bailey Ranch HOA, although I'm not speaking in an official capacity as on behalf of the HOA today. A number of my neighbors, including from Hayward Highlands, have expressed their concern to me about the possible changes to Hayward Boulevard being evaluated by the Transportation Department. Hayward Boulevard is our primary evacuation route in case of fire or earthquake. And as you know, Hayward Hills is at elevated fire risk, a situation that's only likely to get worse as climate change continues. A number of the proposed changes would degrade the safety of the residents of Hayward Hills by slowing an evacuation in case of fire or earthquake. We object to any changes that will slow an evacuation. Some of the changes include, include reducing the number of vehicle lanes and adding bicycle lanes. We are very skeptical about the usage of bicycle lanes on a hill with a 14% grade. Adding poorly used bicycle, adding poorly used bicycle lanes seems like a very poor trade off for our safety. At the recent public meeting on these changes, the Transportation Department was unable to provide adequate answers to our questions about how many additional bicycle riders they expected on the steep hill. Possible changes including adding traffic circles at the intersection of Bailey Ranch Road and Hayward Boulevard and Farm Hill Road and Hayward Boulevard. The Bailey Ranch Road and Hayward Boulevard intersection is difficult to get through and even blocked when the students of Stonebury Elementary School are being picked up and dropped off. At the latest public meeting on the proposed changes, the Transportation Department said it would not be addressing these problems because they were too complicated, and they were unable to give any assurance that its proposed changes would not make the traffic worse. We object to any changes that will make this bad traffic situation even worse. The Transportation Department appears to have reached out to the Fire Department, but what input the Fire Department may provide and how will we, it will generate it remains opaque to us. We are concerned both about the inputs, if any, the Fire Department will provide, as well as what the Transportation Department will do with them. At the end of the public meeting with the Transportation Department, we could not tell if our concerns would be given more than pro forma consideration or would have an effect on these proposed plans. We request that the Hayward City Council stop the evaluation and planning of these changes until our current concerns have been addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
No, but I'll, so this, as Madam City Manager, can you?
Yes.
What the next steps are in this process?
Sure. I mean, as the council is aware, this has been a longstanding concern for many residents in that area in terms of speeding along Hayward Boulevard, which was the initiation for the project. There's been a number of significant accidents, including some fatalities of residents in that area. And so that was what prompted the discussion of the improvements, which were actually called for by the neighborhood. So we've had a number of neighborhood meetings, and so we're finally now starting on the design process. It's still very early in the process, and I just want to indicate that the Fire Department will be very involved. We work closely together in coordinating and review of the plans to make sure that emergency vehicles and, you know, egress and ingress is, is not impeded. And so I think this is going to be a balancing act between the concerns that a lot of our residents have expressed about speeding along Hayward Boulevard and ensuring that residents can still exit safely in case of an emergency. So the Transportation Department, I believe, is going to be holding some additional community meetings. I don't have the date of when this will be on, on the council. I think it's coming to Council Infrastructure Committee for review, but there will be further outreach and engagement, and hopefully we can come to some compromise solutions that will help address the concerns we've heard about speeding, but also ensure that neighbors are safe in, in case of emergency.
Yes, okay. Thank you, and thanks for the comment. Our next speaker is Susan Galke.
Hi. I wanted to talk a little bit about a policy innovation thing that came up the other day in the budget meeting. I want to say, please don't disregard the volatility of mental health situations. Some have said that it may be worth the risk to send an unarmed clinician to crisis situations, but is it? If they don't know what they are potentially walking into, is it the right thing to expose them to the risk? A crisis situation is not the same thing as a controlled clinical environment. People off of medications, people high on drugs often lack the ability for reason, that their brains are just on overdrive with emotion. And if they also have a weapon of any kind, they are more likely to use it. This is another instance where I think it behooves the council to allow our police department to have the use of drones. If you don't want police directly involved on a response team, at least allow a drone to surveil the scene and make sure it is safe. You owe, you owe any response team that courtesy. Safety after all is what we're most important, what's the most important thing that we're all looking for, safety for everyone. So that's my comment for tonight. Thank you.
Mayor Halliday, I believe you're muted. Yes. When my phone rings, I mute myself there, and, but it has stopped, so thank you. Next, next we have TJ.
Hello, Council. I am TJ, and I wanted to make a couple of comments with regard to last night's Budget and Finance Committee meeting. First, I'd like to thank the city for including Hayward Concerned Citizens as advisors to the workshop's policy draft. There were some good ideas proposed that we felt were worth pursuing as a pilot, as well as some thoughts of our own we contributed, and you've already seen in our letter, which was attached to the report. We appreciated the time and efforts the teams put in, as well as the ability to hear their feedback on the process. In speaking to the process, I want to advocate for our older population in Hayward. I think that while applying a racial equity lens to all of these public safety proposals, there needs to be awareness and inclusion with regard to the age of our residents too. I kept hearing the teams refer to empathy interviews primarily with stakeholders aged 30 and under. Our older population was also underrepresented in the community's safety conversations conducted in the fall. But the silent majority, our senior citizens, can provide some important data too, knowing that their experience of safety and policing in our city more than likely represent a different set of lived experiences than that of our younger population. And there was a reference made last night that one proposal looking at social media was not important, but the media is really what has brought us to this point. It's where many get their information and perpetuate the message that all police are bad, thus they should be stripped of tools, funds, and resources that help them to do their job. This seems to include any future resources like drones that would help increase safe outcomes and recruitment efforts to help increase staffing. This seems to dismiss outreach opportunities to promote transparency, community relations, and positive messages about HPD that would help strengthen community partnerships and not destroy them further. The Nextdoor platform is used community-wide by a diverse group and is used all the time for discussion of safety concerns in our city, but council really needs to have a finger on the pulse of what the neighborhoods are saying, as the police have. Our police have been transparent in updating our community and sharing their weekly blotter of stats, and guess what? Most of the calls they're responding to are not mental health calls, they are for burglary and theft. So I think to say we need minimal police presence and to remove police from all realms of society just to punish- just to punish or not to have to see them is not realistic. I'm a firm believer that partnerships and problem-solving go together to have successful outcomes, just as the workshop demonstrated. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have George Syrup.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, City Council, Mayor. I just wanted to thank everyone who was able to attend our Healing Hayward event on Saturday. The council members that showed up, your presence was meaningful, and I'm optimistic that they'll be back with the appropriate action. I'd also like to thank the members of the Budget and Finance Committee last night. I thought the conversation was... It left me in a place of optimism, and I appreciated all the comments that were made and the seriousness with which Hayward, the Hayward Community Coalition or Haycoco's demands were taken into account. I wanted to speak to drones for a second because the topic has come up a little bit. From my understanding, Alameda County currently has one of the largest drone programs in the Bay Area. And now that... And HPD also has access to it at no cost. So I don't think that we need to necessarily fund those drones when we have a ton of community services on the agenda that are requesting funding, and we're only actually able to meet half of their funding goals. I think there are better things that we could spend that money on. And I also want us to be clear about these facts when we're talking about whether or not HPD has access to drones. They do, and they often can get them in under an hour. I also want to speak to whether or not cops need social media. I don't think a cop having a TikTok account keeps us safer. And if we want to talk about what needs funding, we can look to Haycoco's budget demands, such as the call for funding a mental health response team, moving the 911 call center out of the Hayward Police Department. I believe TJ Hayward just said that the majority of calls cops receive are for burglaries, but that's not the majority of calls that are placed to 911. And I think the distortion of that fact should be noted. I also think Hayward should have a social services department as well. And I'm sure you're tired of hearing all of Haycoco's demands, but we're going to be coming back each week just to make sure that we can continue to have this conversation until the budget is decided on. I really want to encourage City Council to look at these stimulus funds as an opportunity to fund some of the ideas that we've talked about, to add additional funding to the community services that have requested funding and are only receiving half of what they asked for. This is a real opportunity to initiate a just recovery, and I hope that City Council hops on this opportunity. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Suzanne is next.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, I'm Suzanne Luther, member of Hayward Concerned Citizens, and I want to urge the City Council to approve HPD's drone request. The city has drones. Many residents of Hayward have drones. All the other municipalities in the Bay Area have drones. All the news medias have drones, all except for HPD. And as the previous speaker before me, he said that we can borrow drones from Alameda County in an hour or two. No. In situations such as hostages, anything that's urgent, time is of the essence. These drones will be used for search and rescue, burglaries, robberies, hostage situations, accident reconstruction. And as I said, time and safety are of the essence. Why, oh why, have you not approved this safety tool yet? It's been on your plate since 2018. It's time to approve this, and I respectfully ask you to please approve this much-needed tool. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Tom Ferrera.
Good evening. You hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Tom Ferrera. I would like to speak about our 12 Hayward officers that have been held hostage for almost over a year now by not being hired for the safety of our city. I understand that you take... I understand the hiring of these 12 officers and using that for mental health calls and homeless issues is part of the reimagining aspect of everything. But we don't need to reimagine anything. It's already been imagined. In 2004, March, Alameda County, we already approved in Measure A a mental health crisis response team for homeless as well. And that is called the CAT Team. And the CAT Team is at the Falk Ambulance Service, which is in Hayward. My coworkers, I used to work there 22 years, 911 service for Alameda County and Hayward. We did about 50 calls, about four or five of those for Hayward might have been mental illness. But with those CAT Team, we have one CAT Team up and running right now with a licensed clinical social worker as the EMT. And then when we respond to those calls, you also have an officer that goes by to make sure the scene is safe. On top of that, we have part of that funding. We're going to have two CAT Team members. So there's going to be two CAT Team members driving around Hayward. We don't need to reimagine and do this all over again and spending the 12 officers that we should have for public safety for our city and using that to build a whole nother team. It's redundant. It's not necessary. It's a waste. So I'd rather see that money spent for our city and the safety of our city and making things safe for everyone. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next, Selena McManus.
Good evening. I'm just calling in tonight to support Haycoco's demands in regards to the budget. I'm curious to see if council has talked about the two houseless people that have been murdered in downtown Hayward where HPD patrols and nothing was done. A woman was stabbed to death in broad daylight. So how safe are we if our most vulnerable aren't safe, but our lovely officers are doing safety patrols on foot? They ain't doing shit. Reimagine the damn budget because we need to fund mental health services. We need to take youth and family service out of HPD because I guarantee black and brown people don't want to go in there for a free, tax-paid service. But I'm pretty sure concerned Karens don't give a crap about black and brown people. Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, our next speaker is Lacy Amade.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council. I am also calling in to address some of the discussion points from last night's Budget Committee meeting. I just, I want to reiterate, my name is Lacy Amade. I am a community organizer with the Hayward Community Coalition. As some of my colleagues have said, we want to urge you and just want to let you know that we are going to be sticking with our four recommendations, which is to have a mental health crisis responders team and have that be independent from the police, as is being implemented in many other cities across the country, to move the call center, the 911 call center, away from PD, to double the funding that we give towards for homelessness services and for affordable housing. And lastly, to establish a social services department in Hayward. Just as my colleague Alicia mentioned, Saturday, we had a vigil to have a place for community members to mourn and to heal. As I'm sure you're aware, not only have we continued to lose Hayward community members or Hayward community members who are still mourning their loved ones because they've lost them quite recently or within the past couple of years, but we continue to see tragedies happen in Alameda with Mario Gonzalez and in other cities around the country. I just want to remind you all that that is what this is about. On Saturday, we saw the four-year-old daughter of Stoney Ramirez with her grandmother, kind of not really understanding what was happening. You know, it's a very painful thing to see. I'm sure it's very painful for the families, but as a community, we are in pain to see that and to think that we are not going to do something with the urgency that it merits in order to do what we can to have a more compassionate community where we're trying to prevent something like that, preventing a child from living without having her father, and so on. I just want to say that we came up with these demands, our these budget recommendations, you know, after speaking with a lot of impacted people, and that's what equity is about. You put the impacted community members, you center them, and you listen to them. I just want to say that at the basic principle of this is we're talking about having a more equitable budget. I'm hearing, you know, some of these community members and Mayor Holliday, you echoed that in saying that people are angry and that they want to punish the police. You know, there's people who are really, really hurt. And I hope you would agree with me that there is reason for people to be in deep pain. And they may sound angry because of the position they're in where they are literally losing their loved ones. But a lot of people, like 55% of the survey respondents, they just want services. They want services that aren't there right now. So we're looking for a more equitable budget. We're looking for these common sense services, and we are going to be holding you all accountable to see if you're responding with the urgency that this moment requires. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Artabia Berry.
Hi, this is Artabia Berry. Can y'all hear me? Okay, yeah. All right, awesome. Greetings, everyone. I serve as a Commissioner for the Community Services Commission, as well as I'm a deeply engaged community member serving a lot of nonprofits here in Hayward and across the Bay. First, I want to thank all of the folks who participated in the Policy Innovation Workshop for your great work. I was actually encouraged with some of what I heard last night and think we are actually making some progress. I would like to offer my comments, including the following. One, I would ask council to revisit the letter provided from the Community Services Commission last summer immediately following the murder of George Floyd. There are a number of initiatives outlined there, some of which I heard last night, some of which were not lifted from the process. Would love to see those under consideration. In addition, would like to really pull out the fact that black residents were underrepresented in the community conversations. We heard some statistics that stated that they were very much underrepresented. Want to encourage us to do the hard work to build trust with the African-American community. Take the time to go and talk to more black residents. Also want to lift out a request to do an analysis on the policy regarding banning the use of deadly force. Most of what we are considering is around preserving the dignity of life. I appreciate all the steps we're trying to take to get there and encourage us to at least analyze the policy. Would also ask us to consider investing even more in de-escalation training for our officers, at least at the same rate of arms training, right? My understanding is that we get about eight to 12 hours of training per year in de-escalation, which is not enough to properly prepare an officer to deal with the circumstances that they face. Also want to take this last 50 seconds to iterate support for demilitarizing HPD, banning the purchase and use of military riot and surveillance equipment, including drones. While they do make some members of the community safe, feel safe, they make some of us in the community feel far less safe. And the impact on black and brown communities when drones are in use is well documented. So I ask that we reconsider and look carefully at the impact of drones on some of the other members of our community. Thank you for your time tonight. Look forward to the discussion and to hearing how we will continue to support safety nets for the broad community through the CSC recommendations and through the American Rescue Act funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Araceli Arasco.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Well, first, I'm here to support the Haycoco budget demands. I think we also need a equitable budget that reflects the needs of our community. And the demands, it's very, very clear that that really goes beyond what our community here needs. I also want to take the opportunity to thank the Haycoco for doing the Saturday event, even though I didn't attend it. I had people calling me after, telling me that it was a beautiful event. And yes, our community and our folks are hurting. And I think it's really important to give them that space. So thank you. Thank you for organizing that beautiful event. I also wanted to talk about the meetings with HUSD. We need to continue those meetings. We have only had one. Because of the decisions that the city takes one way or another, it also affects our children's education. You know, affordable housing. We all know that by providing affordable housing to residents that were born here and by not providing the affordable housing they're living in, of course, they're taking their kids. How does that affect the ones that we can't, we don't have that option to move? It's... Our kids' education should also be a priority for the city of Hayward. Let me give you just a couple of examples and how does that hurt our students. For example, HUSD is starting the conversation of closing schools. What happens when schools get closed? They then will have overcrowded schools where there will be so many kids in one particular school that they don't even have enough time to take either their breakfast or their lunch. And so, you know, our kids need to be having their lunch and be able to eat it. And so that's just a small portion of it. But also working with the HUSD to make sure that the decisions that both of you are making are addressing the needs of all our children because they are our future, and we totally need to invest. And once again, I'm totally in support of the Haycoco budget demands. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Bruce.
Let's go ahead and unmute. Bruce, are you able to hear us there?
So Bruce, can you unmute? Are you hearing him?
No, I don't think... Let me see if I could try to... Going to remove permission, and I'm going to allow him to speak again.
Okay, Bruce, if you're with us, unmute yourself and go ahead.
Maybe he's not able to unmute at this point.
All right. Well, we're sorry. We can't hear you. But you could call the City Clerk's office tomorrow and perhaps, or send us your comment in an email. So with that, I don't see any other hands raised. Did we have any other requests to speak, Madam City Clerk, that you are aware of?
No, Madam Mayor. I believe there is someone, a panelist. I believe Councilmember Wahab is the only one who has raised her hand.
Oh, all right. Well, we're going to close public comment then. And then, yes, okay, then. Councilmember Wahab, what would you like?
Thank you. Well, one, I just wanted to thank everybody who spoke on a wide variety of topics. I do want to ask our city manager regarding the HUSD Joint City Council HUSD meeting. I know the last that I heard, and I've heard a couple of different things, but the last that I heard was that Superintendent Matt Wayne emailed me, C.C., President Okenda of HUSD, stating that they are in conversation with you as to our next particular meeting. Do we have a timeline of that? Because I think that that is obviously wanted.
So the mayor and I meet periodically on a regular basis with the superintendent and the current president of the school board. So at our next meeting, we can talk about the potential timeline, but we don't have one at this point. I think there was a lot of other matters that the school board was dealing with and other business that they were addressing in terms of their post-election issues. And so I think we just, we hadn't addressed a timeline yet. So we're happy to do that during our next conversation with the president of the board and the superintendent.
Okay. And just for the record, I know I've said this in the last time. I know when I first requested these joint meetings, if we can kind of focus the next meeting, hopefully, on housing, student-teacher housing. If we can kind of focus the next meeting, hopefully on housing, student-teacher housing, if if at all possible, and focus on that, especially as we are talking about this next item that, you know, potentially has more money going towards housing. We have some housing projects that I think that, you know, their input would be valuable. So just tossing that there. And then, number two, I did want to thank Congressman Eric Swalwell for earmarking some funds for the stack. I think that, you know, half of council, the mayor, councilmembers Zemanyo and Lambon and Salinas. And I did have an opportunity to visit the stack this this afternoon, if you will. And hopefully, we can get that up and running. I think that's very exciting for South Hayward in particular. So I'm very eager and very excited for that. So I just wanted to publicly say thank you and thank you for, you know, keeping Hayward in mind, if you will. So thank you.
Yes, that was a that was a great afternoon. And I think the city manager is going to make some additional comments later on about about that and the exciting announcement. And and yeah, it was good to see our congressman and and take him around what is now the Eden Youth and Family Center. That will be the the South Hayward Youth and Family Center someday when it's rebuilt. And we're collecting the money to be able to take the, you know, not the first steps. We've taken many steps, but some actual construction steps, which will be exciting. So.
Finalize it, right?
With the groundbreaking, yeah. The groundbreaking and someday ribbon cutting. So. Okay, so with that, we're going to move on to our.
Councilmember Zermanyo and Lambon have their hands up as well.
Oh, sorry. I am, okay. Councilmember. Councilmember Zermanyo.
Yes, my guess is that there were a couple of youngsters possibly tuning in today. And I want to have us explore the possibility of tuning out somehow or other when words that are not proper being not heard on these on this medium. There were three words that were issued today, and if we had any youngsters listening, that's not very good. So I don't know if there's any type of censorship of this type of event, and it's probably not possible. But, you know, with especially today with all these youngsters listening, and some of them might still be around. So I don't know if it's something that can be explored. Thank you, Mayor.
On regular television, they seem to be able to bleep things sometimes. But yes, I maybe a reminder at the beginning of public comments that we shouldn't have to do, but to ask everyone to please be mindful that, you know, some words are very offensive and it would be best not to use them. English language has many other words that can be used that are not offensive. So but I think legally, I think the Supreme Court may maybe has weighed in on this, and I don't know that we can do anything about people using whatever language they want to use at these meetings. But thank you for the comment. Councilmember Lambon.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that the next Hayward Local Agencies Committee, which is a joint committee of the council, the city and the school district, will meet on Thursday, May thirteenth, so just a couple of weeks from now. And that is a Zoom meeting at four thirty. Public is more than welcome to attend. And additional housing on school properties is something we've put on the future agenda items. So I don't know for sure if it'll be talked about on Thursday, but just wanted to let the public know that that meeting is happening soon, and everybody's welcome. Thank you.
Those meetings are regular, too. Yes. So thank you for that. And could I ask you what the drawing is behind you?
This is our.
Is that one of our posters? Is it?
It is.
How did you do that?
Magic, the magic of Zoom.
Wow, I love magic. Okay, it's very interesting. I like it. So you look good in front of it. All right. With that, and seeing no further hands raised from my fellow councilmembers, we're going to now move on to our action items this evening. And as I said, item number three on the Amazon facility has been moved to May fourth. Our consent calendar this evening consists of two items, item one and item two. Is there anyone who would like to pull one of those items off of the consent calendar? Or any member of the public who would like to speak on one of those items? Seeing no hands raised, I would entertain a motion from someone.
I'll move item one and two, Mayor.
Okay. Was that Councilmember Zermanyo? Okay, so items number one and two have been moved by Councilmember Marquez, seconded by Councilmembers Zermanyo. Madam City Clerk, will you do a roll call vote?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Andrews.
Aye.
Councilmember Lambon.
Aye.
Councilmember Marquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Salinas.
Yes.
Councilmember Wahab.
Yes.
Councilmember Zermanyo.
Yes.
Mayor Halliday.
Yes.
Thank you.
So we're now going to move on to item number four, which is our community agency funding. We're being asked to approve fiscal year 2022 Community Agency Funding Recommendations and the Fiscal Year 2022 Annual Action Plan. And we will hear from Assistant City Manager Ott. And I do believe that this item is going to be divided into a couple of parts and that you're going to start with general fund and with the general fund allocations so that all of our councilmembers can hear those. And then when we get to the CDBG funding part of it, we have two councilmembers, Councilmember Andrews and Councilmembers Zermanyo, who will be recusing themselves, and they can say why when we get to that. But in the meantime, Ms. Ott, our Assistant City Manager, are you going to start us off on this?
I'm going to actually, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to turn it over to Monica Davis, our Community Services Manager, who's been working hard on this along with Carol Lee, Management Analyst in Community Services. So I'm going to turn it over to Monica.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead, Monica. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Hopefully, y'all can see my screen. My name is Monica Davis. I'm the Community Services Manager. And I'm here this evening with Carol Lee, Management Analyst in the Community Services Division, to talk with you about the Community Agency Funding Recommendations, our annual action plan for fiscal year 2022, and our provide an update on the emergency COVID funding. Oh, and I did want to just acknowledge for those of you who, hopefully, all of you who spent the time to read the staff report. I apologize. When the staff report got converted into PDF, there was a slight error. And so it notes that there's an error. It should is referring to table one. So if you got tripped up on that, that's all you missed. But I just wanted to fill you all in. And as as the mayor acknowledged, we'll be splitting this presentation into two two parts in order to have the councilmembers be able to participate fully. So the first part of this presentation will include an update on the COVID emergency funds that were distributed over this past fiscal year. We'll talk about the Fiscal Year 2022 Annual Action Plan and cover the general fund portion of our Community Agency Funding Recommendations. And then we'll we'll pause for questions, discussion, and a council action with all the councilmembers. And then we'll ask Councilmembers Zermanyo and Councilmember Andrews to recuse themselves because of their wonderful participation with some of our nonprofit agencies. Community Development Block Grant Rules require that if an individual or councilmember is engaged on a board or has been engaged on a board in the past year, they aren't able to approve funding recommendations. And so for that wonderful reason, unfortunately, we'll split the decision-making for that part out. And and then Carol will provide an overview of the funding recommendations also for CDBG. And then again, engage in questions, discussions, and council action. And so tonight, there are three areas for staff recommendation to hear updates around the emergency funding that occurred through CDBG funding to affirm the community agency funding for next fiscal year, including approving the funding out of the general fund. And then also adopting a resolution to support the funding for CDBG and our one-year annual action plan. And so we'll start with an update on our Community Development Block Grant Funding. CDBG CV is the acronym, but it's really the emergency funding that the city received to help address issues that were COVID-related. And so, excuse me, the city received two rounds of funding over this past year to help address coronavirus aid. The first round was just shy of a million dollars. And we were here about a year ago exactly to get approval from council to help address the needs within the community by accessing these funds. And then round three occurred, was provided to the city and a little bit more than a million dollars specifically dedicated to economic development and rent relief. And so in April of last year, staff recommended and council approved funding to combine both that extra CDBG emergency funds with any unallocated or unspent CDBG funds to create a pot of almost one and a half million dollars that was distributed to local food banks to support our renters and homeowners, to do counseling, to increase services, to address needs for individuals who are unhoused, support childcare providers, and increase information and referrals through Eden I N R, as well as to support our small local businesses. And then in December, additional funds were committed by council from the emergency funds. And then again, any unspent CDBG funds in the ballpark of 1.7 million dollars to really focus in. And this this particular round of emergency funds was dedicated to support economic development and to prevent displacement, both for our tenants and our homeowners. So included a tenant relief program, rent relief program, and a loan program for our homeowners. And and to provide some additional food distribution support. And then just a small sliver to support administration. And so this is a small snapshot, some of the success that we've had with the emergency funding. Almost eighty percent, or eighty percent as of the beginning of this month, of those funds have been in contract encumbered. And that includes we've spent 100% of our funds that were allocated to our small businesses and rent relief and for additional services provided through our Hayward Navigation Center to support individuals who are homeless. And additionally, 35 small businesses were assisted through our grants already. Over 600 rental assistant grants were provided into the community, incredibly valuable. Over 50 households received education and technical assistance to prevent foreclosure during this time. And then 41 small childcare providers were given access to PPE and information about how to keep their homes or childcare spaces clean and accessible. So this this extra funding really enhanced the city's ability to continue to operate our partners and it just incredibly valuable. And then I did want to also fill you in briefly about the Community Development Block Grant Timeliness Requirement. And I feel like whenever I come to present to you, I have these technical jargon pieces, and they're incredibly important to share with with the community and council. Timeliness is essentially a required test in a point of time that HUD requires the city to comply with and how we spend the federal dollars we receive in the form of Community Development Block Grant Funding. And a couple of years ago, we were behind in spending our money. And so our staff has been working incredibly diligently to ensure that that issue doesn't occur again. And actually, we were waiting for quite some time to get our money from HUD this year. In fact, they awarded it to us at the end of March. Just they were experiencing some technical glitches. And due to the fantastic work of the folks on my team, we were able to meet timeliness in our first round of draws immediately. And so when HUD comes to look at how much we've spent, they'll be able to see that we have been spending and providing those funds out into the community in a timely manner. And I'll just say that there was an opportunity for a waiver. We could have just waited, but it was really important to demonstrate and get those funds out into the city. So thank you to my team for always doing the right thing and getting that money out. And then I also, I was here early in April to share with you in detail the annual action plan for fiscal year 2022. If you recall, the annual action plan is a one-year piece of our five-year consolidated plan. And so just wanted to reflect back that for next fiscal year, these are our priority needs, which also overlay well with the community agency funding piece that you all have been, that you heard about at the beginning of April and that Carol will again share with you this evening. And this just helps dictate the framework in which we are allocating our CDBG funds. And this is another way of looking at at those buckets and how those funding are programmed. You'll note that the total dollar amount is more than sort of our annual allocation from HUD. And that is because we're also looping in any program income we received, any loans that we had provided that come back to the city. We're reprogramming out to get back into the community. And with that, I will turn it over to Carol to talk about the funding recommendations for the general fund.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Like Ms. Davis mentioned, I'll present the FY22 Funding Recommendations. I'll start with the general fund, and later on, I'll present the community agency, sorry, the Community Development Block Grant Funding Recommendations. And so in the next, so we'll just proceed with arts and music category. In the next slide, you'll see a chart. It should look rather familiar. There have been no changes to the recommendations since we presented this during the work session earlier this month. I will spend a little bit of time highlighting some of the newer agencies and new proposed projects in order to provide you a little bit of information on those. I'll start with the West Coast Blues Society. Over the last 20 years, they have presented the Hayward Russell City Blues Festival. And their new proposed project is to add a Juneteenth celebration to that series, and they are being recommended for funding this evening. In the next slide, we'll proceed to social services. And our first of three slides is our projects that promote food security and health. And I do want to draw your attention to Tiberio Vazquez Health Center's new project, and that's their Care Coordination and Crisis Services. I'm sure you're all very familiar with Tiberio Vazquez Health Center. They provide education and health services to low-income, underinsured, uninsured immigrant and vulnerable populations. And if approved, this funding will be dedicated specifically to care coordination at their Hayward Health Centers. In the next slide, we'll see housing and homelessness services. Also, I want to highlight Love Never Fails. They are proposing a new project, their Hope in a Future project. Love Never Fails provides support and service, a spectrum of services, actually, to individuals who are survivors of human trafficking, as well as folks who are experiencing homelessness. Their Hope in a Future project supports survivors and their children. And they do this through providing weekly kits that have toiletries and food, activity kits, handwritten notes, and then also a list of resources, including information on food access, employment training, mental health. mental health services, and legal support. And they too are being recommended for funding this evening. In the next slide, we present the information and referral services, legal services, and youth and education programs. And there's one new agency listed here, that's Fresh Lifelines for Youth and their Fly Law and Leadership Program. Fresh Lifelines for Youth has a mission to prevent youth incarceration and juvenile crime, and they do this through legal education, their one-on-one mentor, mentorship program, and their leadership program. And so while they have supported Hayward Youth in the past, this is their first time applying for funding through the community agency funding process. And they too are being recommended for funding this evening. Moving along, I just want to mention in this next slide that the Services Application Review Committee discussed, and the full CSC supported their recommendation to prioritize the areas of food security, health, housing, and homelessness services, should additional funding become available. And the CSC works actively with staff to identify community agencies, as well as potential projects to fund if there's additional funding. And so we respectfully ask that council consider this recommendation as you engage in discussions around stimulus funding allocations later this evening. At this time, staff's recommendation for the first portion of this presentation is that city council approves the funding allocations for FY22 in the categories of arts and music, social services, and also approves the authorization of the CDBG FY22 Annual Action Plan submission. At this time, I will turn things over to Madam Mayor to facilitate public comments, or sorry, to facilitate council questions, followed by public comments. There'll be a time for council discussion and council action. And then following that, Mayor, we'll do the community development block grant presentation.
Okay. So.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I, you know, I should let you know that I too serve on the board of the St. Rose Hospital Foundation. So like Councilmember Zermanio, I will be recusing myself on the second half of this.
Okay, that will leave four of us. Makes you a little nervous, but I, I think we can do this. And, but I do appreciate my fellow, my colleagues' service on these boards. And I think that that, you know, I know we're all committed to these organizations and want to help in any way we can. So with that, but right now, you're okay, like, you're all okay right now. So we're going to take this part. And Councilmember Marquez? I hope you're not going to say that you have to recuse yourself, too.
Last year I did for a portion, but not this year. So. And thank you to staff for the presentation. Thank you to the community services members for their comprehensive analysis of these detailed applications and really appreciate all the effort they put in. I just wanted to remind the public about the rent relief program. So if you can just remind me of what that relief amount was, was it a set amount, or did it just depend on the individual circumstances? And is there still funding available in that relief fund?
Trying to find unmute. Yes, the, the, we have expended all of the city's rent relief funds, and it dovetails nicely, actually, the Alameda County program is now available. In total, between both rounds of funds, we funded about 1.73 million towards rent relief. But that included a mixture of both CDBG emergency funds and just shy of $400,000 from home funds.
Okay.
And so individuals who are interested in the Alameda County program that has now started, they can go to www.ac-housingsecure.org.
Okay, thank you so much. And do you recall the grant amount? Was it 1,200, 2,000? I'm trying to recall what the.
It was up to.
I think 2,000, wasn't it?
I know we went back and forth on, I'll, I'll have that information for you in, in shortly.
Okay, thank you. And then please stop me if I'm talking out of turn, because I know there's certain segments of this discussion we're going to separate for the members that have to recuse themselves. But two specific questions I have, and I guess before I start, I'm pretty sure now that I'm thinking about it, it is separate. So I want to ask questions in regard to, one is specifically social services, because it's the, the SAVE project. So is that an item that I should hold my question on? Or it's okay to ask now? Okay. So I do know that the community services commissioners had made a recommendation to look at moving that funding to come out of the police department. And I believe there were a few of us that supported that during the work session. So I don't see that reflected tonight. So can you please speak to that?
So I believe Councilmember Marquez, you're referring to specifically the SAVE program. And so the, the commissioners had recommended for fiscal year 2023, so not next fiscal year, but for the following fiscal year to work with HPD to identify how to allocate funding. But we were always a year ahead. So staff will be working with HPD to try and identify funds for, planning for the next, the following fiscal year.
Okay. So I, I support that, and I appreciate that it's years out, because we are making a lot of budgetary changes this year and a lot of additional money coming in. So trying to streamline things. So I'm glad to hear that. But I do just want to make sure that there's still a vetting process of the CSC members. So it may be a little bit challenging, but I think it's still important that the members continue to review the application. So I'll just give that comment. And then my same follow-up comment with respect to the funding that the library receives. Is that something that we're in discussions as well to look at planning? Or if you could speak to that, please?
Sure. The, the, the library is in the community development block grant funding portion of the conversation. And the request was to potentially identify alternative sources. And we will also be continuing that conversation with libraries, the library.
And then do you happen to know off the top of your head, how many vacancies or anticipated vacancies we're going to have on the CSC for the upcoming recruitment process?
Yes, the city clerk helped confirm that there is, are there are anticipated. There are currently two vacancies, and the city clerk is in process of confirming reappointments. And I've been, I've seen at least one additional commissioner who's not able to continue. So at this point, I anticipate at least three.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And so the grants were up to $2,500 one-time payments. And individuals who are currently interested in rent relief through the Alameda County program can also just call 211.
Okay. Is it possible that the Homeless and Housing Committee can get an updated statistics once all that money is expended? I know at one point, we got demographics, like who actually utilized the money, their level of income. Just want to have a full picture of that. It was an effective use of funds. I think it's really valuable that we provided it to the community, but I would love to share with everybody the good work, the outcome of that funding.
Sure. For the COVID relief funds, and specifically the rent relief program, we can pull together that data.
Add a future date, and that can be shared with the committee. And then, of course, we would all have access to that information.
Absolutely.
Trying to create more work, so trying to see where, where it fits appropriately. And thank you, and thank you to the commissioners again.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you for the presentation. I was curious about the West Coast Blues Festival and Juneteenth celebration, and how with COVID restrictions, if that impacts that, if things are lifted, or what is the, I understand there's a virtual concert, but is there an opportunity for them to revisit their application, or it has to be what they presented, and they receive the funds based off of what they presented? Just curious, because it's a concert. So just wanted to see how that would be changed if something happens with the, the state and local CDC guidelines.
Sure. I mean, my crystal ball is as clear as yours. And so I think the plan at this time is for the Juneteenth celebration to move forward in a virtual manner, as was presented to the Community Services Commission. And that is just because that's the working knowledge I have with the current Alameda County regulations. Should the shift in advance, then I, we would work with Mr. Stewart to allow for him to progress his event in a different manner.
Okay, thank you.
Now, well, and if not this year, next year, right? Live next year. Okay. I don't see any other council questions right now. So I am going to open public comment on this item. If you are attending via Zoom or watching the meeting, there's, I'll turn this over to the city clerk to remind everyone how they might get in touch with us. I'm not seeing any hands raised from Zoom attendees here, so.
No, Madam Mayor, but I think it's, it's good to remind them that if they are joining via Zoom, they could use the raise hand feature. I still don't see any, any requests to speak, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So I'll close public comment and entertain council comments or, and hopefully a motion. Councilmember Wahab?
Thank you. I, I want to thank everybody that has worked to make sure that this moves forward. I know that there's a lot of, you know, good nonprofits, you know, previously working with nonprofits and obviously having to recuse myself in the past, too. I know it's difficult when, you know, especially right now when everybody's struggling, that you want to be able to fund everything. So again, I, I know you guys had a very difficult task this year, more so than any other year. I really appreciate the recommendations. I think they were well thought out. I think they were well vetted. I think that, you know, we're definitely moving in the right direction as to, you know, all the needs that our community actually is requesting and is also being served. So I really, really appreciate that. I, I really appreciate also staff's work on this. To Ms. Davis's credit, I've heard nothing but positive things from commissioners. And, you know, everybody that has pulled together data, information, and presentations, and so much more. So I, I just want to say thank you again, and I'll move the item.
All right. Okay, the item has been moved, the staff recommendation on this item has been moved by Councilmember Wahab, seconded by Councilmembers Zermanio. Councilmembers Zermanio, did you want to?
Yes, I need to make sure that all of the commissioners and Monica, Ms. Davis, really, and Carol, of course, are thanked for the excellent work. I was amazed, on the staff report, it said that the, all of the petitioners requested $4.8 million. Certainly wish we could, given every single one of those dollars that was requested, but unfortunately, we're not able to. So again, personal thanks to our staff and to all the commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just add that my thanks to, to the commission and to our staff, and, and especially to the staff for doing that, a great job of not having us be not timely in our use of funds, and, and therefore having to, you know, go through a lot of hoops to get them. Good work this year. I'm not surprised, though, because we do have a great staff in community services right now. And you have done a tremendous job this year, all of you, the commission, I mean, and the staff in, in, in dividing up these funds, which is not easy. You can't please everyone. I do hope that when we're going, when we go to the next item, that we can, you know, direct staff to look at some of the unfulfilled requests that were made and direct some funding there from the, this year, from the money that we are getting from our generous federal government. So with that, I will, with the, on the motion, with the staff recommendation made by Councilmember Wahab and seconded by Councilmembers Zermanio, Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Andrews?
Aye, good job, everyone.
Councilmember Lamnan?
Aye.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Salinas?
Yes.
Councilmember Wahab?
Yes.
Councilmember Zermanio?
Yes.
Mayor Halliday?
Yes. And the item passes unanimously. So now, I believe that, so I'll turn it over to Councilmember Andrews first. Would you like to announce why you will be leaving us temporarily?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just recuse myself, as I was a member of the Downtown Streets Team Hayward Area Council, so advising them on items in Hayward. So I will have to recuse myself. Thank you.
Okay. And Councilmembers Zermanio?
Yes, I have the same pleasure of helping keep our community hospital healthy, as a member of the St., St. Rose Hospital Foundation Board, something very important for our community. So because of that, I don't want to cause any problems for the city. I am recusing myself. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. And Councilmember Salinas?
I too serve on the St. Rose Hospital Foundation Board, and so I will also be recusing myself.
All right. I think the city manager is ready to let you all know when you can come back. So we'll say goodbye. Okay. Watch the text. Yes. Okay. And now with, yes, are we still here? With just four of us left on the council, please go ahead with the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will continue with the community development block grant funding recommendations, and will be presenting the categories of public services, as well as economic development and infrastructure. And we will start with public services. And so I do want to note one quick thing, that of the HUD entitlement award, the city is allowed to allocate up to 15% towards public services, which is reflected in the numbers being presented this evening. I'll also take a little bit of time to highlight a couple of agencies that have applied for funding in the past, but were not recommended. And then also give an update to their application this year. And we'll start with A1 Community Housing Services. They have, as Ms. Davis mentioned during the work session, they actually applied for funding in the past, but were not recommended. And this year, when they applied for funding, the staff provided additional support through the application process and also before the interview process. And they are being recommended this evening for funding. Just a quick note that they were also awarded Emergency Services Fund in FY21. And very similarly, in the next slide, for economic development and infrastructure, we have central community partners that also applied for funding in the past in FY21, and were not recommended for funding. But staff also provided support and guidance through this process, and they are being recommended for funding this evening. If approved, the funds would go towards supporting Hayward entrepreneurs with a focus on women and minority-led businesses. In the next slide, staff's recommendation for this portion of the presentation is that the city council approves the CDBG funding allocations for FY22 in the categories of public services, economic development, and infrastructure. In terms of next steps, in the next slide, the public comment period that started on April the 6th will close on May the 6th. Any interested parties can direct their comments to me. My email and my telephone number is provided on the slide, and also written comments are welcomed and can be directed to City Hall. Also, the FY22 Annual Action Plan submission is due on Friday, May the 14th. And the next slide, again, I will turn it back over to Madam Mayor to facilitate council questions, public comments, discussion, and action. Thank you.
Okay. So are there any questions? Not seeing any hands raised. I will open public comment and, on this item. And again, I do not see any hands raised from attendees. So. And Madam City Clerk, you aren't aware of anyone who wants to make a public comment on this?
No, Madam Mayor, I'm not aware.
So I will, did I ask for, I did ask for questions, right? From, okay, and there weren't any. Okay. I did ask for questions, right? From, okay, and there weren't any, okay. And so I'm going to close public comment, and we will go to council, those of us who are left here. And I hope that we can reach a decision tonight, since it will take all of us. So Councilmember Wahab?
Thank you. Again, I just want to say thank you to everyone that participated, and again, to the resources that are needed. I hope that we can provide more in the coming weeks and months. So thank you. I'll move the item.
Okay. There are second, Councilmember Marquez?
Mayor, I'd like to defer to my colleague, Councilmember Lamben. Since she is a liaison, I just wanted to acknowledge and thank her for her hard work on this commission. So.
Thank you for that. And yes, thank you. In addition to thanking the council, the commissioners and the staff, yes, we should thank Councilmember Lamben for her, you know, her being a liaison to this commission, which I think is an important role. So Councilmember Lamben, would you like to second the motion?
Or would you prefer to make the motion? I'm happy to pull that.
That's a very, that's a very good of you. Councilmember Lamben, Councilmember Wahab has withdrawn her motion for the moment, so would you like to make the motion?
Well, thank you very much to to all of my colleagues. It's very kind. I do almost nothing for this group. It is an amazing set of commissioners and staff, and I'm honored to be in the conversation. So thank you for the acknowledgement, and I'm happy to move the item.
Second.
And Councilmember Wahab has seconded it, and I think, yes, so let us go ahead. And once again, I'll just say that when we get to the next item, we can talk about, hopefully, you know, increasing this from from that other money. But in the meantime, Madam City Clerk, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Lamben?
Aye.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Wahab?
Yes.
Mayor Halliday?
Um, let's see. No, I vote yes, and the final business item of tonight, legislative business. So I'm, let's see, are we seeing them come back?
They're taking a coffee break.
I was gonna say, they went to go make some food, some snacks. I don't know what happened. No response to the text either.
How long did they think we were going to go on with the discussion with only four of us left here, you know? But I'm sure that they all want to come back and weigh in on this next topic. So, yes, there is Councilmember Salinas.
Okay, so apparently it did go through, because at least Councilmember Salinas suggested.
Yeah, and I, and as I got the text, right as I was opening a fresh box of Sees candy.
Of course.
Oh, you had to say that. There are problems with Zoom in that, you know, if you were in the council chambers, you would be sharing that box.
Yeah, probably.
By decree of the mayor, you would be sharing it.
Well, in in council chambers before, I sat next to Councilmember Wahab, so I would have to make sure I took the caramel ones out first.
I'm not interested in the caramel ones, so that would work out well. I want the coconut. I like coconut. Okay, let's see. We are waiting for.
I'll text them individually as well, just to.
Councilmembers Armentio is probably eating.
So yes, many thanks to the youth artist who created that.
Oh, yeah, that is cool. And I want to say, I would really want to go on the website and see all of the, you know, and read the essays.
Do we want to just begin?
Well, the PowerPoint is very similar to what they saw last time, so I'm happy to start the PowerPoint. And
Okay.
No one's responding to me, so. I don't know where they went.
Councilmember Sermanio is joining.
And I'm sure Councilmember Andrews will be back momentarily. So, yes, why don't we go ahead and have staff?
I'll I'll speak slowly.
Oh, okay. You are going to do this. Okay, yes, I see that.
Although I just realized my PowerPoint is not pulled up yet, so give me a minute. So by probably by the time I pull it up, they will be.
There's Angela.
She just acknowledged.
Hello.
We have our full council back. Yes, we've matched with the business quite expeditiously, but but we do need you all, so we're glad you're back.
Okay, I'm now going to share my screen.
Okay. Now we're on, we're moving to item number five, which is the federal stimulus funding. We are being asked to adopt a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the federal stimulus allocation under the American Rescue Plan Act. And to address, well, and provide feedback on a more detailed plan and process for spending those funds. So, Madam City Manager, please take that.
Yes, thank you, Mary Council. Tonight, you'll see, I'm just reporting back following the meeting that we had on April 6th, which was a work session format. This action tonight gives a little bit more detail as to the planning that staff has been putting together and the recommendations, but still is not a formal adoption of an expenditure plan for these funds, but simply the resolution that we need to submit to the federal government to say that we are, would like to accept the funds from the federal government stimulus package. And then we've sort of given a few, a bit more detail in those two categories that we talked about previously, with some proposed projects that might fall under the categories. So and then also a process moving forward by which we'd get additional either border commission input, council committee input, or public input, and then coming back hopefully in July for adoption of some recommend formal recommendations. So I will kick it off. Tonight, we are asking the council to adopt a resolution authorizing acceptance of the stimulus allocation, and then to provide feedback on the plan and process for the expenditures. So as, this is a little background for those who didn't see the April 6th presentation, just quickly, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, or ARPA, was signed into law March 11th of 2021. Very historic legislation provides $1.9 trillion of economic stimulus to deal with and address impacts due to the COVID crisis. The reason it's unique and historic is it is the first federal relief bill that actually provides direct relief to cities to the tune of $65 billion. Hayward is scheduled to receive approximately $38 million in local relief pending the final calculations and allocation. We expect that $19 million of that, or half of it, will arrive likely within 30 to 60 days of when we submit our resolution, council resolution, and the balance of the the $19 million within at the end of a 12-month period. Obviously, the, as we've talked about before, the funds are fairly flexible and allow us to address city needs associated with the COVID-19 crisis. They must all be expended by December 2024, and the only caveat is they cannot be explicitly spent on pensions or pension obligations. So we we did spend some time really looking at the identified Hayward needs that we've experienced throughout the last year as part of the pandemic. Obviously, you're familiar with a lot of these illness and death and the disparate impacts of COVID on our communities of color, temporary and permanent business closures, loss of jobs, increased housing instability and homelessness, increased client crime light and illegal dumping, a substantial decrease in city revenues and a reduction in our general fund reserves, the need for financial concessions and furloughs from our employees, an increased need for technological support for the remote work transition, and intense expectations to urgently address all of these needs. So as I mentioned, on April 6th, we did have the work session, and we recommended splitting the funding into really two major expenditure categories with approximate ranges of somewhere in the 15 to 25 million dollar ballpark for each range. The first was really focused on external-facing community needs, or laboring life, or community safety and economic recovery. And then the other is fiscal recovery and stabilizing city operations. So really targeting our internal fiscal needs to ensure continued community service provision, but also upgrades to city facilities needed to reopen to the public safely as we come out of the pandemic. And so we had some guidelines for identifying the specific projects. Falls into one of the established categories, addresses a need due to COVID, meets multiple public purposes, or benefits multiple departments, fills a funding gap or leverages other funds, helps us create more sustainable sources of funds. It's something that is ineligible or unlikely to be funded through other sources of funds. I'll remind the council that there are many other small relief funds that are coming as part of ARPA. There is specifically a restaurant relief fund. There is additional small business assistance. The school district will be receiving dollars. So there's a lot of other pots of money, so we're trying to make sure we do an appropriate analysis and target our funds on those those projects or needs that are not going to have funds coming from other sources. We want to make sure that we can expend the funds by December of 2024, and we want to make sure that we can implement any programs or initiatives with the funds using existing or one-time contract staff, and that we're not creating ongoing expenses with these one-time dollars. So we have been working as a team to prepare a more detailed expenditure plan, and we've looked at a variety of different sources. You can see their strategic roadmap, prior council feedback, some of our unfunded capital needs, and then current trends in data and residential satisfaction surveys. So here's, and this is again included in attachment three of your, to the staff report, which talks about in more detail some of the projects that are under each of these categories, but it breaks it down further. So for example, under community safety and economic recovery, there would be three sort of broader categories. Sort of economic development and community recovery in the three to $6 million range, housing and homelessness efforts in the 10 to $14 million range, enhanced cleanup and infrastructure in the community in the two to $4 million range. And then under the fiscal recovery and stabilizing city operations, we'd have the fiscal and staffing recovery at the $13 to $15 million range, building and technology investments in the three to $4 million range, and some disaster preparedness items in the three to $7 million range. So here's a breakdown further of some of the projects that are under each of these categories. So in the economic and community recovery category, we have this this slide details some more specific projects underneath each. Again, this is all an attachment to your staff report, so if you don't have the PowerPoint with you. And then it also outlines sort of what the next steps in terms of outreach would include. So looking at economic development, business recovery programs, and our economic development team has already launched a survey of our business community to every business license holder in the city that had an email address associated with their business license to get feedback on what sort of economic recovery programs are they interested in seeing. We intend to bring this back to the CEDC, Council Economic Development Committee, for further review pursuant to the last item that the council just considered, looking at some additional funding augmentation for our community agencies, and obviously bringing that forward to the Community Services Commission for review and recommendation to the council. Contemplating some funding of the pilot projects coming out of the Public Safety Innovation Workshops. We're still putting that funding plan together. I know I had mentioned at the Budget and Finance Committee Monday evening, using some of the funds from the vacancies in our police officer positions to fund a vast majority of the the pilot projects, but there are some pilot projects that are not specifically tied to policing, so there's a lot of discuss, a discussion of neighborhood participatory budget process, maybe some of the internships or things like that. So that may be what we may use some fun of these funds for those more community-oriented projects that are less focused on changes to the police department. So that will obviously come back to council on May 18th for further discussion and then approval later in July. Looking for expanding and adding more resources and tech lending library for our library programs to enable access to the community. And is it hotspots? Is it Chromebooks? What what resources does the community need right now? That will be coming to the Council Infrastructure Committee before coming back to the council. Similarly, taking a look at the Weeks Branch Library and doing an assessment of facility needs and improvements that might be needed there. Again, Infrastructure Committee Review, and the STACK Center, as we talked about Congressman Swalwell. This year, Congress has decided to reinstitute what used to be called the earmark process. He indicated that they are no longer calling it that, but calling it local appropriations. So that each congressperson is eligible to submit projects that could receive direct funding. Apparently, Congress has significantly changed that process, made it more transparent. The funds have to go to a nonprofit or local agency that is not a, that is not a private entity and is not an entity that the congressperson has any financial interest in. So there's a lot more rules around it, which I think is a healthy part of the process. And so I think this is a great, we are one of, I think, five projects in his district that he will be recommending for funding. That funding will be about a million and a half dollars, but we would also recommend using some of the stimulus, federal stimulus dollars to fund additional dollars towards the STACK Center so that we can get that construction going, because it is an important project for South Hayward. So housing and homelessness. The the couple of suggestions here in terms of projects, extending our hotel annex program. And again, all of this will be mostly encompassed in the Let's House Hayward planning process that will be coming back to the council this summer. Looking to expand our winter warming shelter year-round, and then maybe funding for some of the additional Let's House Hayward recommendations. There were some other housing-related programs that we looked at, relocation assistance for more relocation assistance for displaced tenants, providing some foreclosure, legal and financial assistance for those homeowners who may have faced challenges during COVID, looking to potentially start a first-time homebuyer down payment assistance program, and then exploring a possible tax defaulted or foreclosed property program. And so all of that would require outreach to stakeholders, but then also probably review by the Housing and Homelessness Task Force. And lastly, in the community safety and economic recovery, we had some enhanced cleanup and infrastructure projects. So basically, really targeted, we're calling it Operation Clean Sweep, which would be a very targeted and enhanced citywide cleanup effort for the foreseeable future, adding additional resources there, allowing for those encampments that really cannot continue to stay in their location because they're impeding right-of-way or causing other health and safety issues, providing for some hotel vouchers to, for those encampments where we do need to clean up and we don't have other shelter resources to offer. So being able to offer some hotel vouchers in those those situations, also providing some additional funds for homeless encampments, which we've seen sort of increase during the last year during the pandemic. Again, a mobile pressure washer for those cleanups. And then there is a site on Enterprise that is, we, the maintenance services department uses when they're picking up bulky items that stays there before they get transferred to the, you know, or picked up by waste management for transfer to other waste facilities. So sort of cleaning up that site and and creating some enhanced infrastructure there. And then potentially looking at Mission Boulevard Phase 3. And other good news, we did also hear from Congressman Swalwell's office today, maybe it was yesterday, that he is going to be submitting the Mission Boulevard Phase 3 project as one of his recommended projects for the federal infrastructure bill. So we may not actually need to use these stimulus dollars to help fill the gap for that Mission Boulevard Phase 3. So So that's, we'll sort of see as that process unfolds. And again, most of this will come through either the Council Infrastructure Committee or straight to council in July. So switching over to the fiscal recovery and stabilizing city operations. Again, looking at thirteen to fifteen million dollars here. Obviously, highest priority is replenishing the general fund reserves that we use to maintain city services over the last year and a half. And then we are anticipating revenues to be lower for the foreseeable future. And the legislation does specifically allow us to offset revenue loss that we anticipate as a result of the pandemic and potential business closures and sales tax and other reductions in revenues. So some portion of that would be allocated from these funds. And then obviously eliminating employee furloughs and repayment of other employee concessions for those groups that did contribute. And we will be working with our labor groups over the next couple of months and coming to council in closed session to discuss those before bringing it back to council for action. Number of building and technology upgrades. Technology investment in city operations. We've talked about this a couple of times, which is, has a lot to do with upgrades to city council chambers and some of the other conference rooms to facilitate ongoing virtual hybrid meetings when we return to in-person meetings. The building security upgrade project, sort of speeding up the funding of that. It's easier to do some of that work when employees aren't all in the building full time right now. So sort of pre-funding that. Additional new security cameras, potentially a city hall intercom or communication system, which has been something that the city hall has been looking at installing for emergency preparedness purposes. Looking at a remodel and our refresh of our corporation yard, particularly some of the facilities for our employees that are in very poor condition, locker rooms, bathrooms. Expanding our fleet shop. They have a temporary tent outside that they work in some of the vehicles. And so trying to figure out if we can expand the shop so folks can have a full, be able to work on all the vehicles inside a protected building. And then looking at a fully electric utility vehicle. And then the last is obviously relates to our fire department and disaster preparedness efforts. Potentially, there was a fire engine replacement that was deferred, looking at that purchase. Also looking at, there's still a small funding gap for the completion of the fire training center from Measure C. So instead of loaning money from another fund, but using some of these dollars to fill that gap so we can finish the construction this year on the training center. And then a rescue pumper vehicle. So those are, I believe, the projects. And so our next step is upon council approval of the resolution, we're going to submit that to the federal government. We'll conduct our additional outreach after this evening and receiving feedback and do the council committee reviews in May and June. And then we'll return to council for approval and appropriation of the first batch of our stimulus funding in July. And then obviously, we'll have to continue six month reviews of the expenditure plan and appropriations as necessary. And our plan with the dollars is really to do something similar we have done with Measure C, which is it will be kept as a sub fund of the general fund. And so that allows us, while it's still general fund dollars, it allows us to track it separately for reporting purposes. But you will, in the annual financial report or the audit, it will all get rolled up into the general fund. But for the budget and for other reporting purposes, we'll keep it separate like we do with Measure C. And so our recommendation this evening, obviously, adopt the resolution, authorizing acceptance of the funds, and then providing us feedback on the draft plan. And then obviously, we'll start with, because this is alleged business item, start with council questions, then public comments, and then a council discussion and a possible motion. And I want to thank particularly Assistant City Manager Ott and Finance Director Clausen for their work and coordination with the executive team and other staff members on putting this really comprehensive plan together in short order and really being thoughtful about how we do that. So I'm going to stop sharing my screen now and happy to answer questions and if there's any public comment. So, thank you.
Okay, I think we have some questions. Councilmember Marques.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager, for the presentation. I just want to clarify that I'm understanding things correctly. On one of the slides, it did indicate that we can possibly allocate more money to the nonprofits and that that allocation would be vetted by the CSC. I know, obviously, we haven't landed on a specific number, but can you give me a timeline as to when that would occur? You're muted.
It would be the same timeline as with the review by council committees. So it would be in the next month or two, in the May or June timeframe. And then we would hope that we would be able to come back in July. Also, we're going to have to balance what gets funded now versus what gets funded sort of for next fiscal year. So I mean, the CSC and discuss with them, they may say, well, maybe it's better to spread that, you know, additional appropriation over two years to give more money for that pool for a two-year period to help with recovery efforts. So those are the kinds of conversations we'll be having. But the initial conversation will happen in the May-June timeframe, and then we anticipate coming back to council in July.
Okay, and then just to also, I guess I have comments, but I got a word a minute question. So help me understand in terms, I know during the work session on this item, I made some pretty supportive, strong comments in regard to making all of our employees whole. Some took furloughs, some took concessions. There were different measures taken, right, to help support the lost in revenue. So based off reading this report, it looks like that would be more under the internal organization. And do we have to do that on a second phase? Or can we? Up front, like when will we have those discussions? I'm trying to figure out when our employees can anticipate that acceptance of funds.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we've got, we still have to, because this will likely either require modification of side letters of agreement or sort of additional agreements between our bargaining groups. We need to have those discussions with them, bring those back to council in closed session, and then reach tentative agreements and then bring that back for public action. The hope is that we would be able to do those actions in that first batch of funding. So that, I think that has been our anticipation, is that we would try to repay those concessions in the first, sort of in that first timeframe period in the first year.
If you can help just for the public to kind of keep track of this conversation, some of it's kind of like insider language, right? So if you could just briefly summarize why this is complex in regard to there's different MOUs, there was different concessions made, not every group did the same thing. So if you could just kind of help kind of summarize why this is a bit complex.
Yeah, and I think, you know, as you mentioned, each labor group has a separate memorandum of understanding. And then for the concessions, we basically had side letters put into place for each of those that were approved by the council. If you remember, there was a series of actions last year to approve those side letters. And so that requires, under state law and collective bargaining rules, we have to go back, because technically, the side letter is still in effect until we negotiate something otherwise. And so the council's intent is clear. We just have to get agreement from our bargaining groups. We had three groups that did three different types of furloughs. We had our fire union and some of our executives that for went COLA, a cost of living adjustment. So everyone did something a little differently. So that's why it takes a little more time just to kind of walk, work through that collective bargaining process.
And based off the staff report, that is an allowable appropriation. We just cannot use those funds for pension or to pay any funded liabilities. That is explicitly spelled out. Okay. So if you could please just repeat, this is just a resolution, basically, to.
Funds, which we don't have yet, so we can't spend anything until we actually get the money.
This is an ongoing discussion in terms of actually appropriating the dollars. So the community will have further opportunities to weigh in, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, councilmembers, Armanio.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Kelly, and thank you staff also for a very good job. Let's see, I received an email from somebody, I believe in the Library Commission, about possibly needing to spend half a million dollars for improvements at Week's Library. Is that what we're thinking about, half a million, more or less?
We don't know yet. I mean, I think the first step is an assessment of what is needed at the library in terms of improvement. So my anticipation is that there would be some, probably in the first appropriation, a recommendation for feasibility assessment, analysis. And then potentially from there, that would be one of those projects where we'd be able to split it, where the first year you would be able to really do the facilities assessment, needs assessment, and then fund it in the second year. But that's something that will be obviously considered by the Library Commission and then the council as part of the actions coming up.
Are we considering about a million dollars for the STACK to kind of match what Congress may give us?
I think we're going to look and see how much, how much, how much money we still need, how much money we have left after some of these other community conversations. There's some moving parts there. So we're going to just kind of, that's one where we have a lot more flexibility. And so we want to see what comes out of the other discussions and make, maybe make some adjustments. Because as you can see, we're subscribed already, and we haven't even come up with the final recommendations or heard additional projects that you all might want to add to the list.
And there is, I mean, there's excitement, building on STACK, and I believe we're short about, what, eight million dollars?
I believe it's somewhere in that range, yes.
Okay, let's see, are we planning a hefty amount for first homeowner's buyer's assistance? In my mind, that's something that really is important. So are we planning maybe a million, two, or?
I think it also depends on what gets allocated and recommended from others. But in, I think to make the program worthwhile, probably an initial allocation or appropriation of about a million dollars seems to make sense.
All right, okay. I didn't really see small business support. Is that something that was in there hidden somewhere?
It's under the economic development. It's the first project under economic and community recovery. It says economic development, business recovery. As I mentioned, economic development is doing a survey of our businesses to see what is needed. So then we'll tailor programs based on the feedback we hear from our business community. So if you want, I would encourage you to share that survey on your social media accounts. Encourage business owners to respond and let us know what their, what their needs are.
Yes, I'll be doing that soon. All right. Though we have a number, have we considered how many electrical, electric vehicles we may be considering? That's something that's close to my heart and many of us, that.
We haven't considered an exact number yet. We will.
Okay, all right.
Again, that's one of those flexible ones where it's not, you know, it's probably like a lower tier priority than some of the other projects, but still important. So we're trying to fit it all in, but we may not be able to fund everything, so.
All right, I like the idea of security cameras for several areas, but I didn't see anywhere possible even fake security cameras in popular dumping grounds. I think that's something that can help the anti-littering. So I'm hoping that you consider that, I don't know if it has been or not. My biggest question is, is fifteen million dollars going to be enough to make our employees whole?
That's not all, yeah, not all to employees. That's, that's not all for employees. Yeah, so the employee piece of that, I think, is around two million, if I remember correctly, in terms of the savings that we received. The rest of that is replenishing the general fund reserve and making up for our lost revenues over the coming year.
Okay, so we're included in making our employees whole, we're including COLAs that they might have lost?
Correct, that is, it's dependent on the discussions with the bargaining groups. But yes, we would like to look at the concessions they gave and trying to figure out how to make them whole based on the concessions that they gave.
Okay, so in my mind, that needs to be a priority, making them whole. So, okay, because I mean, our employees did suffer because COVID, so we want to make sure that happens. So I just want to make sure that I ask that question to keep it in everybody in my colleagues' mind also. Make them a priority. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wahab.
Thank you, Mayor. So I kind of was a little concerned about this. Primarily, I just wanted to ask, so I did kind of a quick addition to all the low end figures. So you know how the first group says three to six million? And it continues on to ten to fourteen and so forth. I added all the low numbers. We are being given thirty-eight million dollars, but all the low numbers add up to about thirty-four million. So it wasn't a hundred percent clear. I do just want to say, in the future, I hope that we are, you know, our numbers add up, if you will. So that was just the first question I had.
That's because we haven't landed on, so if you add up all the top numbers, we're well. So we are, we asked staff who are project managing a lot of these to give us like a range. So we, you know, and so that's where we haven't, because we haven't heard from the council or from the community or their boards and commissions, we couldn't land on solid dollar numbers yet. Didn't make sense. We wanted to hear from the council on their priorities.
Perfect, so I just wanted to highlight that. I also wanted to, it's a little vague, right, as to what some of these projects are. I definitely wanted to ask, we're able to substitute some of these projects? Like, I understand these are some of the recommendations that staff has kind of pushed forward, but, you know, I have some of my own recommendations, but are we going to get a little bit more detailed as we move forward?
So as the, you know, presentation in the staff report talks about, there'll be additional review processes for some of these projects. But if there are specific projects that are not listed on here, this is, you know, based on staff's assessment of kind of the highest priority needs that haven't been funded previously, this is what we had come up with. If there are projects that are not on this list that the council thinks we should explore and look at, we can add those to the list, you know, if the council is supportive of that, and then bring those to the appropriate committee before coming back to the full council for approval.
Okay, and so the economic development and business recovery, for example, it says various programs over all three point five years. You know, three to six million dollars. And considering that economic and community recovery is our, you know, one of our number one priorities post-COVID, why was that suggested to be so low?
I think for a couple of reasons. One, just how much we can push out the door. Similarly, with the rent relief program, it did take us some time to actually get the money out the door and to get applications in to allocate the money similarly. But I think there's, this is, you know, based on conversations with staff in terms of what the need might be out there and what we can, you know, realistically sort of distribute and get out to the community that this, that three to six million encompasses a lot of these efforts that are listed under there in attachment two.
Okay, and so the reason why I bring up the amount of three to six, because under this category, we also have the STACK facility contribution. And, you know, just, just knowing construction costs are significant, three to six million is not going to go far. If, so I kind of just want to highlight that as a concern of mine. And then, and then what is community agency, sorry, not that one. On the community agency funding augmentation, are we going to be limiting it to housing, education, and jobs?
I think that's why we're bringing it back to the Community Services Commission to see how they would like to prioritize the use of those funds, given that they are supposed to be used for COVID-related efforts. So I think that's, that's a discussion we would have, have them sort of think about or talk about. Do we just take some of the applications we weren't able to fund this year, increase some of those? Or do we look at a different process altogether? So I think that's the conversation we intend to have at the Community Services.
So in all of this, because it is community safety and economic recovery, and specifically economic and community recovery, I would like to focus and make sure that, you know, we are able to put that there. And then I did have a, the Public Safety Innovation Workshop, a pilot contribution, and depending on what we end up selecting and how much money and so forth, these are one-time funds to kind of, let's say, kickstart a program, correct?
Correct, so these are all one-time funds. And that's why I had mentioned in my comments that we. that we'd be looking at projects under here um from the innovation workshops that might be more one-time in nature. So for example, um, the participatory budget process, which we had anticipated as being kind of a one-year program. Um, there's some other sort of efforts on there that might be more one-time in nature. So that it, it, we wouldn't want to use these dollars um for more of ongoing programs um that we hope to continue past this year. I, I say that and then I look at the next um category at the Hotel Annex Program, which we hope to continue, but we're not sure we'll be able to. Um, but again, that's, you know, we're trying to figure out how we, how we sort of keep services going for a bit longer that we started during COVID. Um, but we have, there, there may have to be some tough decisions um if we don't have other dollars to supplement or supplant these after the, the dollars are gone.
Okay. And then the warming shelter, um, I just want to make sure that I'm correct on this. It is between, you know, midday, they are required to leave, correct?
Uh, I don't know, and I don't know if anyone who is on, maybe Ms. Davis is still on the call. But I believe, yes, they can only, they can, they can arrive in the evenings, but they have to find someplace else to go during the day. Am I correct in that for the winter shelter?
Yeah, that's my understanding. We can check before, but that's my understanding as well. And this would allow it, yeah, extend it year-round, which was a strong recommendation from the Let's House Hayward.
Yeah, and, and I understand that. Um, and I think I, I mentioned this in the previous meeting. Um, so uh, the concern is to find, let's, let's see, are we able to potentially find it for a twenty-four hour? Because even midday on, in winter, it's freezing cold, or midday summer, it's freezing, I mean, super hot. So um, are we able to find some type of partner in that sense that actually is like twenty-four seven?
Yep, we can look into it. I think one of the reasons we're recommending this over maybe other programs is because we already have existing contracts with a potential provider. So it would allow us without addition, a ton of additional staff work to kind of extend a program that's of high priority. So we, we can check with the provider that we have in mind and see if that's something they're willing to do and then how much it would cost.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Ott. I have a couple more questions for you. Uh, housing-wise, it, it, it says that we would be interested in, um, you know, investing in the foreclosure legal and financial assistance. You know, I've asked multiple times and I kind of want to see, I did not see it specifically listed out here. So I definitely want to raise this. Are we potentially doing the first right of refusal project here?
Well, the first right of refusal is a policy that the Council would have to adopt um to, just so that everyone understands. So that if anyone who sold their home in Hayward that had an existing tenant in it, is how I understand it, would have to give a first right to the tenant before selling it. Um, and so we are recommending as part of this effort to enact new policies. We're trying to kind of fund projects or one-time expenses or programs that we already have in place that we can extend for a longer period of time, so that we're really kind of minimizing the, uh, the impact um that we're able to implement quickly. So that's not part of that. And that would be setting up a whole new program and then, and then it would be an ongoing kind of obligation.
So I do just want to highlight that, you know, in foreclosure legal assistance part, the tax-defunctive foreclosed property program, a lot of these things, the first-time homeowner down payment assistance program, things like that, it is stated as fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. Um, so I do just want to highlight that, you know, these are ongoing projects for the next couple of years. So I understand the policy concern, but um the tax-defunctive piece is also of interest, you know, in the sense that eventually we're gonna have to adopt something. So just tossing it out there that I would like to see something around that. Um, and then, did we talk to our property owners, um, specifically landlords and so forth, um, that own less than four units?
We, I mean, we've had recent conversations. I know Christina Morales, our Housing Manager, has talked to um, you know, representatives of that group recently. Um, and we will do that outreach um going forward, you know, prior to the task force meeting in June.
Okay. And specifically also, what are we doing around single-family homeowners? You know, I, I know we focused a lot around renters and granted, they're the most vulnerable. But what about the homeowners? Um, have we provided any assistance? Do we plan on? Nobody should lose their home just because of a pandemic. So what are we doing?
The foreclosure assistance program we're talking about here is exactly for that. It's to provide both legal assistance and potentially some financial assistance.
Okay. And if we can kind of really target specifically and lean out not only just the, the foreclosure piece, but then also just the uh eviction piece, right? Just spread it out so we know clearly what we, we are discussing in that cost-wise, right? And then um on these cleanup, encampment cleanups, are we doing a kind of a one-and-done in the mobile pressure washer? Are we hiring folks or are we um investing in purchasing any equipment so our staff can do it? Or what, what is the deal with that?
Purchasing the equipment, so staff.
Okay, okay. And then um, you know, in regards to, you know, I think this is the main priority I have is making sure our entire staff is whole, uh, making sure FIRE, SIU, HAME, IFPTE, and others, um, you know, those that helped us uh during the pandemic are um given what they were uh supposed to be given. Um, how long do side letters and so forth take typically?
It depends on how contentious the conversation is. I mean, it, you know, and it depends on, there's other issues that get brought into the discussion. So we could do it in as quickly as a week, uh, you know, and bring it back to Council, or it could take a, a, you know, longer than that. So um, our intention is to try and do it as quickly as possible. But um, again, there's a process we have to go through on that.
Okay. And, and, you know, I don't believe this is the case, but how contentious do you think them asking for the money that they have given up would be? If, if it was just strictly to this conversation?
I, I'm hoping it is not contentious, but again, you know, stranger things have happened. I, I'm hopeful that, you know, uh, we're just focused on that specific issue and that conversation and we're not bringing other discussions in, because we are in open contract negotiations with a couple of the groups. And so I just, it would be nice to be able to keep those issues separate and deal with them separately. Um, so hopefully we can do that.
Okay. And then I know I, I, I visited this weekend uh the Animal Services Department and sent you some photos of some of their, the holes in the walls and the buildings and so forth. Is that part of the maintenance package that we have in the building and technology upgrades?
Um, I think we can look at that. I mean, um, I would encourage you to go tour some of the other facilities, like the courtyard restroom and some, you know, some other buildings. We've got a lot of facility needs. Um, and I want to make sure that we're prioritizing um appropriately, given safety concerns for employees. And, and um, so I think there's just, there's a lot of different facility needs, but we can definitely take a look at the animal shelter. You know, if we're doing work at the courtyard from an economies-of-scale perspective, it might make sense to, to wrap in the animal shelter since they are co-located out there. You know, I definitely hear the need. Um, I spent, spent lots of time in our facilities. I see it all the time. So, yeah.
Okay. And then, and then are we going to be looking at the, the type of material that we utilize to be longer-lasting? Because I, I will be saying that, you know, when I toured the facility, um, I questioned the type of material for kind of an industrial type of building or at least a building with a lot of activity, if you will. Uh, are we looking for higher durability type of equipment?
We do. Um, frankly, you know, uh, some, there probably have not been investments in some of these buildings in thirty-plus years. Um, so even with the heaviest of uh industrial materials, when you get to thirty years, some of them start to wear out. So um, I think that's the challenge that we've been facing is to really get onto a more routine, routinized replacement schedule um with our facilities. But there are some big projects we need to do that we just haven't been, been able to fund um with the money that we have available. So.
All right. I, I appreciate it. Those were my questions for, for now.
And my cat Ted heard that question about the animal shelter and was voicing his uh support for that um as you were asking it. Councilmember Anders.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, my question is about the, the community agency funding and us focusing only on um certain categories. And just wanted to know if the arts were still considered as part of that, because the art community was hit pretty hard by the pandemic. And I just wanted to see if that was a possibility is uh.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think that would be, if that's something, we can make sure to send that message from the Council to the Community Services Commission for them to consider as part of their deliberations. I agree with you. The arts communities were really hit hard during the pandemic. And so um, I know there was a lot of requests that weren't able to be funded there. So that um is definitely something that the Community Services Commission can consider. And if the Council, if the recommendations come to Council and you disagree, you can change, change the funding allocations around. You know, at that point, so.
Yep. And then also art-related, um, I was thinking in terms of the maintenance slide, a lot of those items. You know, I, I know deferred maintenance has always been an issue and it's an issue for a lot of school districts and public agencies. Uh, but I was also thinking as a way to kind of help with maintenance, including the arts as part of that is um having murals and um doing things that are, that will do more to deter graffiti, to deter vandalism, um, because in a lot of cities, the art actually is what saved a lot of the cities from vandalism. So just wanted to see if that could be considered COVID-related, if we were to add a mural art program with maintenance as a way to kind of recoup some of that um funds to make sure that things are going, you know, back to, you know, standard, but also appropriate measure.
We've had, you know, obviously a mural arts program for a number of years. Um, we did have to reduce funding to that last year as part of the reductions because of revenue loss um from COVID. So um, if that is something that the Council wants to explore, you know, we could allocate some funds to fund a number, you know, a couple of murals, some more utility box uh art, things like that. We haven't been able to do a call for artists. Um, and so again, helping support the arts community. So I, I think that's definitely something that could be included if the Council would like to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Salinas.
Uh, it's just a, a couple of um, a, a couple of questions. Um, and, and these are sort of slam dunk questions, actually. And I guess I just want to really uh make sure, um, you know, when we were going through the process of determining priorities for our city, you know, we've been, you know, we do this every, so often, every, I guess, every year, if not every couple of years. City priorities are set with community input, community, you know, there's a lot, you know, we do surets and, and so forth. So I, I just want to reaffirm all of the investment um that the community has made in these processes to determine city priorities. Is that correct?
Correct. Um, the strategic roadmap, which the Council adopted last year and has just been going through the process of had a very robust community engagement process. Um, this staff were out at Farmer's Market and South Hayward at the Bart stations, getting feedback on the different projects and priorities. So uh, yes, fair. And similarly with the general plan and the projects in the general plan. Um, as you heard when we talked about the Let's House Hayward Plan, very robust stakeholder outreach and engagement in that process. So, so we have, you know, in sort of establishing some of these projects and priorities, there has already been, you know, a lot of community engagement, but we intend to continue that further as well.
Yeah, great. And then um, the uh, when uh, as part of the homeless initiative or part of the homeless, you know, element to these uh dollars, could we uh consider um the homeless impacts on, on local businesses and support businesses in, you know, restoration um and rehabilitating flora, fauna, you know, painting and, and some of those, could that be used for things like that?
I think that could be considered part of the, the enhanced cleanup efforts, replanting landscaping. You know, because I'm sure also just with some of the deferred maintenance and the crews not out as regularly, some of the ma, the landscape throughout the city may have died and may need to be replaced. So I think it could be included as part of that.
Yeah, great. Um, and then the last question is uh, um, you know, it's about flexibility. Uh, how much flexibility do we have? You know, I know where, you know, we have priorities and we have strategic initiatives and, you know, we have the general plan and all that. But, you know, uh, as time moves, you know, forward, you know, things are going to change. You know, I'm looking at, you know, um, you know, I, I take technology like fiber. Let's say, you know, let's say we start to lay fiber to residential areas, particularly hard-hit residential areas. And let's say tech, some kind of technology comes up where fiber is no longer the thing. How, uh, how, how much flexibility do we have to calibrate uh those dollars into, you know, new and different ideas and?
I think it depends on how quickly we spend the dollars. So, and I, I, we did talk about fiber a lot. Um, I think the bang for the buck isn't there. I mean, to install even just a small fiber line is, you know, over two million dollars and it's not going to serve hardly anyone. And then the bigger issue is who's connecting it to everyone's homes? Who's going to provide the service off of the fiber backbone? And so um, you know, we looked at and thought that the tech lending library for, through the Library Department would actually better, would be a more cost-effective way. We buy more hot Wi-Fi hotspots for home, home, you know, families to, to check out. Um, and then really look to, you know, I think this, how we're able to successfully implement the um fiber ring project that we're currently working on. Um, and whether we're able to, to get providers to partner with us, I think will bear out whether we want to invest more in additional city-owned fiber in different areas of the city. So um, that, that was kind of the, the calculus that we were looking at um in recommending some of these. But I do think, you know, that's why I think we want to recommend maybe using a portion of the funds now. You know, setting aside, you know, sort of tentatively saying we're going to use this, this, that, you know, this bucket of dollars for these things in year two. But then that gives the Council flexibility if there's other emerging needs, if there's other um things that come up. Also, you know, I, I hate to, our finance director is going to throw something at me, even though he's virtual. Um, you know, replenishing the city reserves gives us more flexibility. If we have those, those dollars, um, and we've replenished those reserves, it gives us the ability to, if something comes up, if there's an emergent need, um, it gives us the ability to do that.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, thank you.
Okay. Um, you know, I, I don't, I don't see any other questions from Council members. Remember, this was questions, although I would say that they were questions. And mine is, um, you know, I, I look at a lot, it's, it's just, it's just wonderful. We know what the needs are. We know, we, we feel like we, this is um giving us back some of what we lost, certainly um last, in the last year or so. But, you know, the, the expenditures are supposed to be COVID-related. So how, how do we do that? How, I, I mean, are we, you know, I, I, I don't know what I'm asking. I, I know that the federal government isn't asking you for the plan in, in advance and, and uh, you know, giving you the go-ahead and then sending the money. It's just, you know, we're, we're going to take action tonight so you can get the money. But then we, then we go on with our plans and we spend the money. What, what are the risks there that some of these might, and, and how is that? Do you have any idea how that's all going to work? How we justify that these things?
Does it have to be directly tied to COVID? I mean, the, the stimulus package is in response to COVID, but the language in the package is incredibly flexible. So, you know, I think there's, there's tremendous flexibility for the Council. I'm not concerned um with any of the, I mean, obviously if we're like, you know, awarding contracts to all of your family members, that might be a problem, but we're not doing that. So um, it's, you know, the projects that are on this list, I think all are legitimate needs, legitimate funding um that we have. And our finance director has raised his hand. So yes, uh, he can, he can help respond as well, but I don't believe there are any restrictions.
Yeah, I mean, the, what I'll say to that is um restrictions are continuing to emerge a little bit with this. The, the funding kind of uh beat the, the guidelines to an extent. However, you know, at this point, it, there are some, some very, um, very few, but very clear uh guidelines of, you can't use this to um, to fund pension liabilities. And, but, but you can, we can, the city can use it to um replenish. And, but, but you can, we can, the city can use it to, um, replenish use of reserves, recover for lost revenues. Um, it can, it, it does not have to be COVID specific, um, type expenditures in, in the way that some of the other, uh, previous CARES Act funding has been.
I mean, money, money is money. So when we replenish our reserves, someday we may use those reserves for something. Or if we were just replenish our general fund with money, with tax revenues or with, with, um, dollars from this that we lost in tax revenues, then we aren't limited in what we can use those dollars for because that, yeah. And, and so I'm, you know, thinking that some of the things that, you know, the, the pension, the pension liabilities and not you know, I know on OPAB that we, I, I hear that's another vote for the animal shelter there, isn't it? Right?
Yeah, very, very happy for the animals.
Let the animals weigh in later on that. But, um, if we, um, we had planned, and then when this came along a year ago, we changed that plan to put a certain amount of money into the, I mean, we've been doing this over the years and we were, we actually had a good start toward bringing those liabilities down. Knowing that we were going to lose revenue last year due to COVID, um, I think we reduced that amount where we have the budget coming up now. We're going to be talking about that again. So, um, we can feel a little better about doing, you know, following our, our plan, right? That we had established, knowing that we can replenish those reserves that we didn't, or the revenues that we didn't get and then go ahead. So I, I don't, that's not really a question. It's just, I'm trying to make sure that we're staying within the guidelines. But, um, but still are able to do some things that we had to not do because of the loss in revenues last year.
Absolutely. And I think that's the intent of this, um, is, you know, plans that were put on hold, things like that, you know, being allowed to continue. And we do anticipate getting, um, further guidance from the Treasury Department within the next month. So we'll, we'll, that will dovetail nicely with the planning process that we've laid out for the council and, and adoption by July. So we can just reconfirm that everything we've included on the list is eligible. It's not going to cause any problems based on those guidelines.
Okay. And then also, we don't really have to make the full plan. Right now, we need to plan for how we're going to use the funds that we receive in the first tranche, as you're calling it. Um, but you know, we can, and then we start to see how that all works out and what's, what's working well, what maybe isn't. And so we can defer some of them, some of the decisions to a later time when we're not going to, you know, we're going to be expecting to receive funds, uh, in fiscal year 23. So, um, anyway, that wasn't really a question, but I, I just kind of confirmation that yes, we don't have to make all the decisions about how to spend all the money right now, that we have some time to do that, especially for the, the dollars that won't, won't be coming in for another year. Okay. So I'm going to open public comment. Um, our attendee list has fallen, uh, since earlier, and I'm not seeing any hands raised. Madam City Clerk, you are also not aware of anybody who wants to speak?
That's correct, Mayor Halliday. I'm not aware of anyone requesting to speak. But it would be good to ask one more time if we have, um, we have the attendees, we have seven of them. If any of you would like to speak, would you please raise your right, raise your hand? I don't think, um, there, it doesn't seem that they are requesting to speak, Mayor Halliday.
Ah, I think we just got one.
Yes. All right.
I don't know who it is.
Sad. So I'm going to go ahead and allow to speak. Please go ahead.
Hi, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I just wanted to, um, thank you for your, your comments on behalf of the employees throughout the city, HAM, 21, Local 10 to 1. Thank you so much. We look forward to, uh, talking with you, uh, city managers, uh, shortly.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Seeing no other hands raised from attendees at the moment. I'm going to close public comment and we'll go back to council now. And, uh, council member Wahab.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move the item. And, uh, at the same time, sorry, council member Marquez, you want a second?
Yeah.
Okay. And I would like to prioritize, you know, the, you know, I'm going to say, I'm referring to my notes here. So section number two, basically definitely the internal focus of, again, number one, repaying our employees and, and trying to make sure that that happens as soon as possible. Like I said, I would like for, you know, all the bargaining units to be made a whole. Number two is obviously take a look at our general fund reserves. I, I don't want to have an accident or some other, you know, resurgence of the pandemic in six months. And, you know, we're, we're, you know, in a tough spot. And then obviously I do appreciate the, the look for, uh, revenue loss, um, due to the pandemic and, you know, a year slash two years' time. So I do appreciate that. Um, I also just want to highlight that, uh, if we can have a little bit more clarity, I really appreciate some of the, the, the focus areas. And again, I, I know that some of our, or, you know, I, for example, the shelter program, I'd like to take a look a little bit more as to what that is going to really look like. I would like a 24/7 type of, if we have a program like that in Hayward, uh, we should definitely be focused on that and partnering with them. I do want to highlight the fact that, uh, housing is incredibly important. Speaking from personal experience, usually when an economic downturn happens, a lot of property owners lose their homes. So I definitely want to highlight that, that it goes for single family homeowners. It goes for property owners. I'd like the focus to be on anybody, the smaller mom and pop landlords as well. And really understanding what their needs are too. And, and I don't think that we, we've done enough of that. And a lot of the, the additional work that, that we're trying to do in regards to pushing Hayward forward, I would like our library services to really be looked at and revamped, um, as a place for people to seek out jobs, as a place for students to be able to find internships and potentially, um, be able to, to move into colleges and so forth and apprenticeship programs and workshops. And I, I really want that to be the core of the city of Hayward's, anything that happens, go to the library. Uh, I really want us to be kind of an education city, as I've stated so many times. Um, and I think the library is a, a place that we need to kind of, um, focus a little bit more on. I am a little concerned about areas that we've already kind of approved from, you know, the building security to some of the, um, things in the past. So I, I hope that when we have this returned to us, it's a little bit more in detail as to what is the difference? Why is the money changing? What is the amount? What is the money that we're potentially going to pull out of the original, uh, approved amount going to then? You know, why are we doing it? We, we did approve already some of this. So I, I really just want to highlight that. You know, maintenance and things like that. I think that's an incredibly big priority for a lot of residents as well. But for me, it is, hate to say it, it's, it's going to be around housing, the economy, jobs, um, and potential opportunities moving forward. I don't think that we have, uh, really understood a lot of what we can do and what we need to do around economic recovery. This particular list of items is to me too vague. And, you know, I've, I've talked in the past and in different commissions of, uh, that we need to kind of have our economic development team vamped up, even if that's through internships, temporary, you know, all hands on deck, because we're looking at job loss, we're looking at business loss, we're looking at, um, online real, um, businesses, um, coming up and vacancies that we're going to potentially see. And the impact is slow and we may not see it for another six more months. But, um, I, I do want to highlight that. And then also a check base point, um, you know, six months down the road, what are we looking at? What is our, our figures? Again, the metrics are really incredibly important. So if we are talking about jobs, we are talking about retail and businesses and, and even the housing foreclosures and so forth and, and rental removals and evictions, what are our numbers looking like today? What is the efforts we're putting in? And then six months down the road, if not a year down the road, what do the metrics look like now? Um, I think that's incredibly important for me. And then I'll give it up to my colleagues to add their two cents. Thank you.
Okay. And let me just clarify too, because then you did what we're being asked here. The motion and the second are to, um, adopt a resolution authorizing acceptance of the federal stimulus allocation under the, um, American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. And then
Then I added my comment.
That's the motion. And then you gave the feedback. Yeah. So I just wanted to clarify that for everybody that the motion, what we're acting on tonight is simply the first part of that. But, um, you know, we are, have also been asked to provide feedback. And so that's what we're doing. So with that.
And, and just to add to that, I, I do want to say the side letters regarding the unions, I will tell you that each one of the unions that I have talked to said that they can get a side letter out within, if not a day, if not a week. So, um, I don't think you're going to have a lot of, um, contention there compared to some of the, the previous conversations. So I, I would like that to be a priority. But again, um, my two cents. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so council member, um, uh, Marquez, uh, you seconded the motion. So go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I will do my best to keep my comments, um, brief since obviously all this information is going to come back to us with, um, actual recommendations to appropriate the funds. But I do think it's important to take a moment at this time, collect what's occurred in the last 13 months. There was so many unknown factors. The last time we actually had a council meeting, I believe was March 16th or 17th of last year in the council chambers. We at that time practiced social distancing and none of us could have imagined that we would still be at home participating virtually. And it was a very scary time. And I, I just want to fully acknowledge our community for coming together, for being resilient. Through the leadership of our fire chief and our fire department, we launched one of the first test sites. We've got vaccination clinics open with La Familia, GLAD tidings, food distribution, rent relief, uh, the COVID hotline. We even did grants for undocumented community members. This community and this leadership on the council has really, really stepped up and met every possible need of our community. And we couldn't have done that without the collaboration and our partnership. And I am very happy that the majority of our employee groups shared in that pain. And it is my commitment that we do make our employees whole and that we invest in the individuals that make Hayward unique and Hayward the great community that it is. So I look forward to the further discussions, but really pleased with our new administration that we even have this historic opportunity to have this discussion. So, um, if you're not registered to vote, please register, please get involved. It's really important. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, council member Andrews.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I echo, uh, my colleagues' comments regarding making employees whole and thank you to, um, the city employees for really stepping up. And to those who, um, made some concessions, I really appreciate that. I just want to also keep in mind that when we are bringing back some recommendations, this is an opportunity for us to be creative and to think in the future, be future oriented. And, um, if we can, please include, um, something that would deter some of the social ills that people, you know, constantly email us, call us about. And, and it can bring relief to our maintenance staff as well. So please consider, um, being creative when, uh, looking at maintenance. The corporate PR for maintenance is dilapidated, in my opinion, from my recent visits. So if we can support our employees who help make this city beautiful, that would be great. Also, um, very interested in seeing, um, how the funds will be applied to pilot implementation. These, the one time implementation fund, that doesn't mean that funds are only going to just pilots for one time. So just making that clear that this is, implementation is a one time cost. And it happens on any type of project that you do, you have to pay for that upfront startup costs. That doesn't mean that the pilot will not be ongoing if it's successful. So I am very interested in seeing, um, that money be applied to, um, the policy innovation workshop, um, recommendations that, you know, the community has been asking for. I'm also, I know it's limited funds, but I, I agree with the hotspots. It's more flexible, it's, it's adaptable and, uh, the community really needed it during a time of crisis. And it definitely, I agree with council member Salinas, it definitely exposed the inequities, um, in our community. So, uh, yes, so I know this is going to come back to us. I know there's going to be a lot of tough decisions, but I'm very excited that again, um, our, um, administration, um, particularly, you know, President Biden and VP Harris are stepping up and helping our communities get back on their feet. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, let's see who's next. Councilmember Armanio.
Thank you very much. Um, kind of sad that, uh, Sunday library hours are not part of the conversation, but, um, maybe I don't know if that's something that can happen. I'm not sure about it. But I do want, I, I like all the projects. Everything's going to be real good for taking Hayward forward, especially after COVID losses. But I do emphasize that our employees first, please. I want to make that a priority for us. I'm hoping that all my colleagues agree with this. They are first. They're the ones who came to the rescue of our city when COVID hit us. And I think that's tremendous. And in my mind, that also includes making sure that they have the right equipment, that their facilities are in good shape. But first and utmost is making them whole financially, because it is a COVID economy recovery, recovery of COVID. And that's something that's important. I thank you again, um, uh, Kelly and, um, and your staff for a good work. And yes, I voted for Biden.
I, I would just, on the library hours, again, this is one time money. So I would hate to start a new service like Sunday Library Hours that we know is probably going to be very popular. And then in two and a half, three years, not have funding and then have to make decisions. So, um, you know, it's definitely something we're going to explore. I think there's some ideas that our library director has, but I just, I would caution against doing something like adding ongoing, um, new library hours with these one time dollars.
Okay. Councilmember Lambon.
Thank you. Um, yes, thank you for the work on this. And, um, so I'm supportive of the motion. I think on the, uh, just a couple of comments, um, regarding the displacement. Or, so there's reallocation, um, or considering, um, reallocation dollars. And my priority there would be displacement prevention, if at all possible. And then, yes, um, as a number of my colleagues have said, you know, our, we have a number of facility improvements. The corporate art is already called out, but there's some HVAC issues and, um, some other repair issues that are longstanding employee, uh, health and safety issues that are kind of longstanding deferred maintenance. So I'm looking forward to us looking organization wide on those issues, um, as we start to develop this plan. And then, you know, and to offset that, I mean, the, the city hall cameras in the garage and the Heritage Plaza, the intercom system, I can see the, the logic of those, but I also think those are probably not as high a priority, at least from my perspective, um, as some of this other issues. And then lastly, just, I know it's been said a number of times, and I'll just add my voice to the, you know, prioritizing empowering folks of color in this, in the application of funds. So, you know, housing ownership to address, you know, prioritizing folks that were prevented from buying homes. If we are looking at, I mean, it's a really good point, council member Andrews, about creativity in the, in how we address some of the issues in the community. And is there an opportunity to have a lasting impact on? For instance, do we put sculptures in areas that are repeated dumping spots? And are we prioritizing artists of color in doing that? Or, um, and the, you know, as a number of my colleagues have said, that, um, as much as we can do to address longstanding inequity issues, I'm really excited about that work. And I know the GARE folks are always looking at these things, but, and, um, and the opportunity to really make some lasting impact, even with one time money, seems really exciting to me. So I appreciate the work. That's underway. Thanks. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Salinas.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, I, you know, I really want to call out and appreciate Councilmember Marquez's comments about, you know, stopping, pausing, and, you know, and thinking about what has just happened. And, you know, I, over the last year or 13 months, you know, I've been, just sort of my own little pet project is, I've been keeping a timeline, and I've been sort of dotting all of the milestones over the last, you know, 13 or so months. And, and I haven't only been doing it for, for the city of Hayward, I've been doing it for, you know, all of our partner agencies that, that helped us and that have stepped up. I mean, you know, and, I mean, the fact that, you know, right out the chute, within, you know, within 10 days, we had testing up and running, you know, within, you know, a short amount of time, we were able to consolidate major food distributions, you know, and have citywide food distributions that were safe and that were, you know, preserving all of the safety protocols by the, not only the CDC, but the California Department of Public Health and the Alameda County Public Health. And, you know, it, every agency, every single agency in this city has stepped up. The school district, the school district fed over 22,000 meals a day at home, you know, on weekends too, right? You know, foundations, you know, the Sheba, the Friends of the Sheba College Foundation put laptops and, you know, and laptops and other technology in the hands of college students. You know, I just, through the, just the, just the total effort throughout the entire city. And, you know, and I do like to brag about, we were, in many of these spaces, we were first, and we did lead the way. And, and so, I, we have to remind ourselves about that, and we didn't do it by ourselves, you know, and I've said this before, we did it with staff. Staff helped us. Staff stepped up, and they delivered for us. Again, they did it before when we were in a economic free-for-all, and they stepped up, and they did it. And then, and now, here we are, you know, sort of, you know, hopefully turning the turn, you know, turning this curve where we're going back to some kind of, to a new normal. I don't know what that is, but to a new normal. But, but again, you know, it's always, it's good to be associated, it's good to be associated with an organization that isn't afraid to step up and has the courage to step up. And, and so, I, it's, so anyways, I wanted to say that because I think it's, it's important to acknowledge and to be mindful of. Just, you know, all of the comments that were made, yes, I agree, and, you know, I think, you know, you know, we're gonna, you know, we'll spend the money, sorry, the money will get spent. And, and, and I know, you know, we'll, you know, we'll do it effectively, we'll do it equitably, and, you know, of course, it's not enough, but nonetheless, you know, we'll, we'll do it. But the, you know, just the three areas that, that, you know, I really want to make sure that we deliver on. And, and the good news is that they are part of at least the high-level planning from what I read in our, in the, in the staff report. Well, two things. One, like I said before at the last meeting, you know, as I was reading the staff report, I went back and I looked at my own campaign materials to look at what I had promised my constituents, what I promised constituents over, you know, the last, over the last campaign for when I was running for reelection. And, and I was quite pleased that a lot of the points that I was, you know, making out in the community, a lot of those issues are tightly coupled with what are in these high-level outlines that we see here today. So I'm real pleased with that, and, and I, and, and I get, you know, it goes to just really good planning, and I think over the years, we've, we've planned well. And, you know, so I'm real pleased with that. But three areas that, you know, I'm, that I'm, I'm going to be looking at and tracking real carefully is economic development. We need to get our corridors and our downtown, you know, we, we're talking about, you know, digital divide. We have a digital divide in our downtown. It's very difficult, you know. One of the, one of the, one of the biggest feed, points of feedback I would get from when we had a sign-making company in downtown, they said that they could not have, they could not get the, the capacity, the Wi-Fi capacity to download large files, you know, to make signs. And, and so, that needs to get fixed, right? We need to do something there. And, but, but we also need to create an environment, and I focus on downtown because, you know, of course, there's a lot of activity in downtown, but, you know, we need to make sure that our Tennyson, Harder, Jackson, A Street corridors, along with our downtown corridors are, are, have the infrastructure to either, you know, continue to invest in the existing businesses that are there, but also to, you know, be the place where businesses want to come to Hayward and set up their shop. And then, the digital divide, you know, looking at, you know, if there was one thing that, that was just screaming during this pandemic, is that the digital divide. And so, it's, it's not only the infrastructure, Wi-Fi, broadband, fiber, whatever technology we put in, but it, it's also looking at putting hardware in the hands of people. And, and, you know, if it's hotspots, fine, we can do that. Laptops, I know that, you know, those are in big demand, and I know the school district is doing a lot of work, Cal State, Sheba is doing a lot of work in that area. And then, lastly, disaster preparedness. I am so pleased that disaster preparedness is in there, and it's, and it's investing in our fire department and tooling first responders to be, you know, to really think about public health and, and look at how we expand the role of the firefighter. And, you know, I know one of the innovative things we started was, I don't know if it's still, you know, being implemented today, but it's the, the truck, the rolling, the smaller truck that's rolling through, you know, individual neighborhoods and, and doing COVID-related activities and, and things. But, you know, maybe it's augmenting that, supporting that, but it's, you know, it's really looking at the, the skills and the tools that our firefighters have that really respond to public health needs and public health, and in this case, public health catastrophes. So anyways, with that said, I'm surely going to be voting for this. I'm glad we're getting the money. I certainly, you know, a long time waiting, and I'm glad we were able to see results. If anything, I'll say this last, elections matter, and this past election mattered, so thank you.
Yes, I think we all are aware of that. Thank you, everyone. I want to really support the comments made by Councilmember Marquez and Councilmember Salinas about looking back and seeing what we've done in the past year and where we've come. And I was reminded that just this afternoon, one of, you know, Congressman Swalwell's chief local staff members told the city manager and I, I just really couldn't have spoken more highly of Hayward compared to all the other cities in the area, saying Hayward really was there, she was just absolutely amazed at the job that this city did last year in meeting, in meeting the needs of the community as we all plowed through this pandemic. So that certainly was seen by people outside the city. And, and I want to thank staff for the job that you did in putting this together. It was a very good framework for us to work with. Obviously, these were, someone referred to them as vague, but obviously, that, that, you know, they were not meant to be finished, you know, detailed proposals. Thank you for respecting us and the community, knowing that, you know, that we need to refine the details, but this is the framework, this is an excellent framework for us to do that in. And I want to remind everybody that this isn't the only money we're ever going to have, and we are about to go into a budget, you know, our budget season, where we will discussing money that we do have in our, we didn't lose all of, all of our own revenue. And, and so, you know, there's, I mean, I think that between, you know, what we're planning to do with this money and, you know, what we can, can look to doing with our own, you know, budget, it, it's just a good discussion for us to be having, what we can't fund one way, we can fund another. And I would also point out that, I think especially on the broadband, it was brought up, like the city manager noted, that really, if we put all of this money into the, which we are not going to do, I don't think, we wouldn't really be able to cover all of that. However, there is, hopefully, another bill coming, and I think broadband is definitely mentioned as, you know, something that falls under the category of infrastructure. I can't remember what they're calling that bill today, but I'm just going to call it the infrastructure bill, that I do believe this president is going to actually deliver, unlike, you know, you know, the promises, empty promises we've had in the past. But, so that, you know, we need to look there for, you know, also meeting some of these needs. So, just to go through my, my own priorities, on the internal part, the replenish, certainly replenishing our reserves and filling. Whatever we can do to
This meeting is being recorded.
Unfilled agency requests that we received that are worth it. Certainly, housing is always at the top of our list, and there were a lot of COVID-related housing impacts, so we should look at that and how, I mean, I think we've already created programs that we can just pick up and replenish the funds for and go back out, our rent relief and our economic assistance programs. I would like to see, you know, us, I hate to say that phrase, but, you know, accomplishing a couple of our goals with, you know, one, with one bunch of funding. What I'm trying to say here is that, in, in doing, say, cleanup or extra tutoring in our library because of the loss of, you know, the loss of the school year last year for the kids, and looking at some of our residents who might be qualified to do some of those jobs and who haven't been rehired yet or had lost their jobs and aren't back at regular work, that, you know, we, we could achieve some of our goals and also help some of our residents out who need some extra income right now. So I'd like to look at what we can do in that area of using the dollars to pay people who have lost money in our, you know, in our city during this pandemic to do some of the work on a, you know, temporary part-time basis. And, you know, internships certainly also. And the, I would agree that some of the policy innovation recommendations should be worthy of receiving some funding. And finally, I'll mention again, I think what I mentioned the first time around, especially in the second year, when we start to be able to, well, we're starting to be able to now gather together again. That was a very nice event this afternoon. But events, I, I think we should reserve some, and it probably doesn't need to be a whole lot of money, but next year, when we really can get together again as a community, when, when we can have events, we need to invest a little in events that will bring our community back together and, and, you know, get us back commuting with each other like we used to do. So those are my thoughts this evening. But again, I just want to thank you for a great job in laying out a good framework for us to have this discussion, and we certainly look forward to continuing in, in the future. And with that, we're going to move to comments from our city manager, if you have any, after all of that.
We vote.
My apologies.
There is a motion, you need to vote.
Oh, oh, right. This hasn't just been, oh, gosh, okay, it's late. Yes, the motion on the floor was made by Councilmember Wahab and seconded by Councilmember Marquez to basically authorize the acceptance of the federal stimulus allocation. And Madam City Clerk, thank you for reminding me, and please do a roll call vote. Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Andrews.
Aye.
Councilmember Lambden.
Aye.
Councilmember Marquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Salinas.
Yes.
Councilmember Wahab.
Yes.
Councilmembers Armentio.
Aye.
Mayor Halliday. Yes, and wow, I mean, that could have been terrible if we had failed to do that. So, good call there. And with that, the motion carries with a unanimous vote of the entire council, and we will look forward to hearing more and continuing the discussion later. And so now, we are ready to move on to city manager comments.
Great. I do have, I think the council is aware of this, but I may have seen some of the news releases and social media posts from the library over the weekend, but we will be officially reopening the downtown library on Monday, May 3rd with limited, limited visiting hours and capacity. We're going to be putting some COVID protocols in place, so I'm going to read through some of, some of the details of this. So it will, we're calling it HPL Express. It will be primarily a walk-in service. There will be two-hour daily limit, well, different, different hour, I'll talk about the, the different hours that are available, but basically limited capacity sessions where residents and other individuals can come to the library. Basically, there will be requirement to wear masks, social distancing requirements. You will be able to self-service checkout materials, pick up holds, get new library cards. Computer use will be limited to a maximum of one hour a day. There will be copying, scanning, and printing services available, Wi-Fi access. We will be limiting seating for reading and studying, just so we can maintain social distancing in the library. The study rooms and the meeting rooms will remain closed, unfortunately, at this point. Storytimes and homework help will, will remain virtual, and we will not be having any toys, puzzles, or games in the children's area. Those will not be available. You will, a total of up to 125 patrons will be allowed during each two-hour window. Monday, it's from 2:00 to 4:00 and 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Tuesday, 2:00 to 4:00, 5:00 to 7:00. Wednesday, 2:00 to 4:00, and Saturday, 2:00 to 4:00. So we are going to try it out, and I would hope that our patrons of the library are respectful of the staff for trying to, we had some challenges early on when the, when the building shut down with people trying to use computer stations that were closed, and so I just would ask that everyone is respectful of the protocols that we're trying to put in place to keep people safe still and while reopening public services. And so I am so grateful to our library team and employees for putting this plan in place. On another note, our maintenance staff are back on their regular shift schedules as of a couple of weeks ago, and so you should see them out and about more, more frequently, more frequent cleanups, and, and sort of getting, getting back to normal work schedules versus the rotational shift schedule they had been on for a while to, to avoid crowding in vehicles and on work crews. In terms of City Hall, what our current plan is, is that we, you know, we are still providing all of our services virtually and have continued to do so throughout the pandemic. We will be planning a partial reopening of City Hall services, uh, around the July 6th timeframe. We're preparing for that now. It will be similar to the library where we'll have limited, um, limited openings every day for people to come in and, and access services and, and get public service, public counter service in City Hall. And our anticipation is that we will have a full reopening of City Hall to normal business hours, um, in September. So that is our current plan. Um, and I'm just grateful for all of our teams who've been putting in a lot of hard work. Planning is not, not exactly easy. And again, feels like every day something new changes and shifts, but that has been our last year. So, uh, we, uh, we appreciate everyone's support. And again, we are continuing to provide services virtually. So, um, uh, please just let us know, uh, if you need anything.
Thank you. Any questions about that? Not seeing any. So we'll move on to council reports and announcements. Councilmember Lemnan.
Thank you. There was a question raised, uh, in public comments at the beginning of the meeting about the woman who unfortunately lost her life near the City Hall Plaza. And it's my understanding that, um, uh, there is a suspect in custody. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. The police department does have a suspect in custody. And, um, just on that note, we have been working with the DHIA, the Downtown Hayward Improvement Association. They have just secured also a private security company, um, that has been coordinating closely with the police department to supplement, um, security in downtown. It will not be, you know, it will not look like a police officer, but, um, will also provide some additional eyes and, and ears on the street, the streets in downtown to help ensure that our business, businesses and patrons to downtown feel safe and secure.
Interesting. Thank you for talking about that. Certainly our business has been asking for additional eyes on the street for many years. So interesting. Thank you. I wanted to give a quick update on, um, the redistricting effort and, um, that, uh, the state of California is starting to launch its community education regarding communities of interest. This is the key, one of the top key components in where do the lines get drawn at the county level, at the, um, well, HARD doesn't have districts, but water boards do. And of course, Alameda County Board of Supervisors, um, the state level and so on. And there will be opportunities for people to really decide, you know, this is, this is my neighborhood. This is my community of interest, which could be related to geography or political affiliations or ethnicity or, um, all the things that tie a neighborhood together. And so that, that's called communities of interest. And I was really excited to hear from our Director of Library Services today that the California Library Association is already working with the state redistricting. And so there's a nice opportunity to piggyback on that for education around our, um, county efforts. And, um, and then lastly, anyone, um, sorry, a quick cheers to our faith communities for offering vaccines, um, including for folks age 16 and up. There's a lot going on and I know many of my colleagues are tracking all of that information. So if you're looking for a vaccination, feel free to hit us up. Yes, I'm volunteering all of you for that. And, um, now lastly, um, the South Hayward Neighborhood Collaborative is a, a network of community members from across the city, nonprofits, et cetera. It's been around for, going on about 30 years now. And, um, everybody is welcome to that meeting and the next meets quarterly. So the next one is, uh, the first Thursday in May, which is the 6th, and it is virtual. So if you'd like the links, just let me know. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give a quick shout out to Councilmember, uh, Zermeño on cleanup efforts during this time. And, um, I know that you all are working hard out there. And keep hairy cleaning green. We'll be joining you soon. So I just wanted to thank you for that. And then also I, you know, NAACP brought up an item to me. And I know, um, you know, referrals, uh, at this time are being reviewed, but I thought it's something I should bring up with, uh, the council, which is to have a, um, observation of Juneteenth, similar to how we observed Cesar Chavez and was interested if, um, other council members would be interested in the staff pursuing that. It doesn't seem like it would take a huge effort in terms of observation. So, um, just wanted to bring up that item since it's coming up in a couple of months.
So is there, so is there anybody who would not want to see us explore? And I, uh, Madam City Manager, you might remind us what that means to observe it in the same way as the, um, Cesar Chavez birthday?
Sure. Um, if the council was, uh, a referral from Councilmembers Marquez, Salinas and Zermeño, about recognizing Cesar Chavez Day as a city holiday, um, with direction that, uh, staff would negotiate with the labor groups, um, to, and I think that the further direction was to exchange, uh, existing city holiday for Cesar Chavez Day. The groups were not agreeable to that. So our compromise position was to create what we call a business closure day. So the city could still observe it as a holiday. We would close City Hall, but employees would either work, um, as, as normal or take paid leave, um, paid time off for that day. So it wouldn't be a paid, paid city holiday for employees, but we would still acknowledge it as a holiday for the city. So that's how we recognize, um, Cesar Chavez Day right now.
So is there anyone who is opposed, um, to, to doing that?
I have a question.
Uh huh, go ahead.
I don't know, Councilmember Andrews, you know, I, I understand what you're trying to do. I, I would be supportive of, of definitely taking a look at Juneteenth and honoring it. The thing that, you know, we don't have a staff report here to kind of brief you on kind of the Cesar Chavez, uh, day is that, um, like our city manager said, none of our bargaining units agreed on it in the sense of, um, what it was originally intended for. They are forced to kind of use their own paid vacation day to kind of take that day off. The city of Hayward has more days off than any other city in Alameda County. And, um, you know, so I don't, like, I think that honoring and celebrating Juneteenth is completely, um, something that I'd be supportive of, but maybe a different format. And, um, you know, I, I'm, I'm sure that our city manager can, can find certain ways. One of the things that we talked about, uh, during the Cesar Chavez discussion was potentially having a lunch hour where, um, you know, the city would potentially provide some education around what Juneteenth is. We could potentially do something like that, that it doesn't impact the day, doesn't add an additional day, um, off.
Okay, so anyone else want to weigh in on this? And I especially if you, um, if you have objections to doing it. Cause I, I think, um, if you don't, and we don't hear from another council member besides Councilmember Wahab, I, I, and I, I'm going to, okay, Councilmember Lemnan.
Just wanted to clarify the ask. Was the ask to have a sort of a business closure, a holiday? Or was it, like, when we say like Cesar Chavez Day, was it the, the business closure ask? Or was it the recognition of, um, Cesar Chavez? Like there was a community, there's a community group, I know, uh, Councilmember Marquez and Zermeño and possibly Councilmember Salinas, apologies, I don't know all of that, are part of a nonprofit that leads recognition events. So just wanted to understand what the ask was from the NAACP.
The ask was for a, uh, business closure and a day off. And I did disclose to them that, 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 um, that is something that will have to be negotiated between the unions. So I did inform them of that. And so what I did tell them that is that I will mention it as part of, um, an observation and business closure and not, and, and in the future, if they want to start those conversations with the unions, they can. But I was aware of the history of, you know, how Cesar Chavez Day is being observed here. So I did inform them of that and the cities, you know, the city staff is also informed of that as well.
I appreciate all that context. Thank you. I don't have any objections.
Okay, Councilmember Marquez.
Um, thank you, Mayor. I thank you, Councilmember Andrews. I appreciate your, um, inquiry. I know this is something that came from a community group. I think right now the ask is just simply, um, are we in support of the city exploring this? I also want to caution, caution us and be careful that we don't have, um, a long discussion on this since it's not on the agenda. So I think at this point, if the ask is simply to further analyze it, um, what I'm hearing is, with the understanding that may be possible this year, maybe a starting point for next year. It's, it's a really quick turnaround. So I think if we just minimize it to that focus, um, 100%, I'm, I'm happy to, uh, start those discussions with, with city staff. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, I mean, we were border teetering on, you know, discussing something. I just, um, Councilmembers Zermeño, since you raised your hand, um, do you, I mean, do you object or not to?
No, no, it's fine. It's good to explore, no problem. We did have a small celebration for Cesar Chavez this year, you know, they are, they are not off, et cetera, with some of the youngsters, uh, with our schools and at Chappell College. We cleaned up, uh, Hisparian Boulevard and we've been doing that for quite a few years. So if the city can explore, by all means, let's try it again with our unions. Thank you. Thank you, Angela.
This is, this is a session that, you know, we should continue. And it could even come into, you know, when we're talking about some of the, um, some of our, um, negotiations with our bargaining groups, um, or even our, you know, our budget discussion. I, I think it should be continued up for now. You know, since, I mean, we actually took a council action on Cesar Chavez Day. So I don't, would that be required, um, in this case as well?
Well, I think, um, probably if, if the direction tonight is just to have us research it and bring it back, we can do that and then the council could take an action with that.
Then we can all talk about it. And I think that would be a good thing to do. And, um, and I, yeah, and, you know, I'll stop there because I, we shouldn't be discussing. But yes, yes, let's have this, let's have this discussion as soon as we can because Juneteenth is not all that far. So, um, okay. The Councilmember Wahab?
Yes. Since we just borderline discussed a referral, when are we going to be discussing referrals and bringing it back? I know, uh, to our city manager, every time I've asked is that, um, our city council has not decided when we will, uh, revisit bringing policy referrals back to council and opening that up.
So it was agendized for, uh, council agenda a couple of weeks ago, but the council didn't get to that item on the agenda. So right now, um, with the other sort of more time-sensitive items on the agenda, some planning, um, planning hearings, uh, it's scheduled for, I believe, May 25th, the May 25th council agenda.
So I'm more concerned, um, that, that referral is just the referral policy as to how we would go about it. I'm more concerned about actually opening up where we are able to bring referrals.
Well, we're talking about the policy itself in this discussion. And so, um, uh, that, that is going to be the opportunity to do it. And it will, will be copied, coupled with a discussion of, you know, the handbook. That was part of the discussion that we put off too. So we're going to start there and May 25th, and then we'll see where that leads us.
Okay, and, uh, so May 25th, I, I just want the public to know that for over 12 months and counting, and it looks like May 25th and possibly beyond, uh, we have not been able to bring a legitimate policy discussion to the city council via referral, which is our typical process, uh, to discuss new policies for the city of Hayward. So I just wanted that for the record, um, and it's been extremely frustrating.
We have had a number of new policies come up this year. We have done an amazing amount of work in the way that we have done it in the past by collaborating with each other. And I am proud of this council and what you just said is just not true. There have been a number of things.
Your staff recommendation, yes.
So what, the referral policy that you're talking about is something that hadn't been in existence very long. And I think that, you know, I just have seen us working together very well this past year in doing all of the things that we have gotten a lot of recognition for doing, um, like I mentioned earlier.
That's true, that's true. However, I'm, I'm talking about specific policy.
May 25th, we can continue to this discussion. But if there are no other, uh, council comments right now, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Good night.
Good night. Thank you.